Good evening and welcome to the Highland Village City Council Early Work Session. Today is October the 28th. It is 5:30 PM. And we are going to get started. Let the record show, all council members are present with the exception of Councilwoman Feaster. And number one on there is clarification of consent or action items listed on today's city council meeting. Council, does anybody have questions, clarification?
I have none.
Okay, none? All right. Well then, we are then now going to go into closed session. Hold a closed meeting in accordance with the following sections of Texas Government Code. Section 551.074, personnel deliver the appointment or employment of the municipal court judge. And it is 5:31.
Citizens may or may not approve of some of these, so if everyone's the same, no one complains.
You think I don't have them?
We all want to give to everybody, so...
Yes. We're going to get started with our nonprofits. We are going to receive presentations from our nonprofit organizations. And I know it's a little, like five minutes early, but we could go ahead and get started if y'all want. Okay. So CASA of Denton County.
Glad to see you all again this year. I'm Debbie Jensen, Executive Director for CASA of Denton County. And CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates. And we recruit, train, and support volunteers from the community to advocate for children affected by abuse and neglect. Last year, I told you about a little boy we called William. He was born in Highland Village, but unfortunately, in his family, it was learned during a Child Protective Services investigation that everyone in the household had recently used illegal drugs. And there was no one to be a safe caregiver for William at that time. So it's one year later, and I wanted to update you on this child of Highland Village. It can happen anywhere, and it does. People using illegal drugs are a risk to children, especially very young children. That's why the court stepped in when it did and put CASA on the case to advocate for little William and make sure that his needs were met and his best interests protected. He's four years old now, and his volunteer, Eddie Ragsdale, said the case recently closed. And Eddie's quote was, "The system worked for this little boy." This little boy went back to his mother, who left the family behind, started on her own, got a job, and returned to a sober life. Eddie was very proud of this mother, and he had worked with her throughout the case for well over a year to have her realize the importance of having little William back in her life. At her first drug test, she had tested positive for more than six illegal or illegally obtained prescription drugs, but she was able to turn her life around. We've already served more than 600 children this year just like William, and we use the services of almost 200 community volunteers each year. Eddie has had four cases for us, and he said the family doesn't trust him at first, but he shows them what's in his heart, and that's what changes things. And that's what our CASA volunteers do. They care for their community, just as you do, and they care for the children and families in it. So we thank you for considering us for funding. Your funding always makes a great difference to us, as does the funding of many other cities that are our partners. We appreciate that you've always supported us, even if it's a small amount to a great amount. Whatever you're willing to give, we're willing to use to speak up on behalf of children who need us. Their lives can be changed because, as you see, the system can work for children. With your help and these amazing community volunteers, including many from your city, we're able to make a difference, one child at a time, and change the quality of life for everyone in Denton County. Thank you.
All right. I think, Council, does anybody have any questions?
I've seen y'all's work in action when I was on a jury, and it was pretty phenomenal. So you do a lot to make the kids feel safe.
Perfect. Thank you so much for being here, Debbie.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. So next, Council, we're going to have Chisholm Trail Retired Senior Volunteer Program.
Is it in order? It's in order, so I don't need this.
It's in order, so I don't need this.
Good evening. I'm Diana Corona, and I proudly serve as the Executive Director for Chisholm Trail, RSVP, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program. And I've served in that capacity for over 28 years now, so time flies when you're having lots of fun, I guess. Just a real quick overview again of RSVP is that we were established in '73, so we've been around for over 52 years. So I think that kind of says that there's real purpose for us and that also we've had some really good board members to manage us for all those years, so we're still kicking here. Our main goal is to recruit volunteers to solve community problems in Denton County. And we match these volunteers with community organizations and nonprofits all over the county. So currently, we have MOUs with over 65 nonprofits. And I wanted to visit with you a little bit about what are some of the Highland Village residents that are volunteers with us? What are they're doing right now? And we have five of them that are in the hospitals, three of the hospitals. They're doing information desks, they're shuttling patients. We have three that are Rockin' Readers. That means that they're reading and mentoring kiddos pre-K through third grade. And primarily around here, it's LISD. We have a volunteer in the library who gets to shelf books. We have one with SPAN. And we have another one who does helping out with the different kinds of activities at a senior center. So they're, and the hours they're submitting are really pretty huge, big-time hours. But I wanted to give you an idea of what they're doing. We've seen an influx of volunteers. I think people are settling, and they're wanting to get out now. They're not afraid to get out, they want to do some things, and we're really happy with that. And then we've got, they keep us on our toes, we've got to find places to put them. So RSVP, we aim to support and serve as a resource for volunteers for those nonprofits that are seeking additional help. So if anybody comes up and says they're looking for volunteers, tell them we're here to help them. We also want to provide opportunities for seniors to remain active, to reduce isolation, loneliness, and depression. So many of you probably know Doug Brown. I'm guessing someone here knows who Doug Brown is, and he just turned 100. Doug is one of my big-time volunteers, and he's a prime example, I think, of someone who never stops volunteering, never stops doing for others. And there's an ancient proverb where a young man asks a very much older man, "What is your greatest fear as you grow older?" And the older man pauses and then says to him that "I no longer have purpose." And so I think, you know, when you think of someone like Doug Brown, who's a World War II vet, has never stopped volunteering, he definitely is one of those that doesn't give up volunteering. And so here with RSVP, we're trying to continue to help those volunteers have purpose, to be able to get up and be involved and be acknowledged and recognized for all that they're doing out in the community. It's very humbling for me because I see it in action a lot. But I also want to pause and thank you all for recognizing the seniors, sending that message that you support them and all that they're doing each year. When you send a message out like that, it's important. So we appreciate your funding and the opportunity to be able to partner with Highland Village. So with that, I'm open to any questions.
Counsel?
I do have one, if you don't mind, Ms. Corona. How do you, how do you reach out to seniors and ask for volunteer work?
Well, an example is this past Sunday, we were invited to a, I guess you would call it like a volunteer fair out at the Dow Web by Little Elm in Union Park. And you never know who you're going to pick up as far as wanting to volunteer. And so we said, "Sure, we'll go, it's a Sunday, that's all right." And we ended up recruiting four volunteers on that Sunday. And I think that's an example of those people that are coming in new to the community that are looking for ways to get to know people, get to engage, and stuff like that. So we do a lot of those. We do a lot of health fairs. We do have people that just randomly come up to our website. We also really are big on the volunteers themselves, bringing their buds, you know, and doing that. We, you know, with our partnerships with the hospitals, they will in turn share information with the people they're recruiting and offer to them, "You may want to think about joining RSVP." Because we do provide a supplemental accident liability insurance for our volunteers. We're required to do that. And a lot of programs don't think about that, but we do. So we have a little extra bit of a perk for volunteers, other than where they're at, such as a recognition luncheon and different events. We just finished a huge event Friday, a Wellness Expo. So I don't know if that answers your question, but we're out and about. We're always out and about, and we're amazed at, you know, the people that can come in and bring other people in.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Anybody else? We appreciate you coming and all that you do in our community. CCA.
Good evening.
Hi.
So my name is Daphne Houston. I am the Director of Programs at CCA. I've been at CCA for nine years because I love everything that we do. And so I only have three minutes, so I'm trying to go as fast as I can. But ultimately, we're just here to provide comprehensive services. So we do everything from, we have an LPC onsite, who now has a practicum team of students that provide counseling at no cost to our families. We have, everyone knows about our food pantry and financial assistance. We have budgeting, we have an online program, as well as a bank coming in, providing those classes to individuals who may not be as good with technology. We have ESO classes, computer classes, parenting classes. We have all these things just to meet the family where they are and ultimately provide services so that they can focus on increasing their skills and their income. This past year, we incorporated what's called a Working Family Success Model, and that is our main focus, is getting people out of poverty in some way, increasing their income, paying for certifications for them to go back to school. And so we just want to say thank you to the funding that you have given us. And just to give you a little idea of what we were able to do with that funding, we spent almost $3,400 just providing rent and utilities to three families that live right here in Highland Village. We also have seven families consisting of 11 individuals who are shopping in our food pantry. So we are serving families, we're giving them funds, and we're just grateful for everything that you provide for us. Like they said earlier, whether it's big or small, it's able to help us continue to serve people in the best way that we can. And one of the things that, with this shift, is we're working with people deeper. So that's the biggest change that you'll see with CCA. So we now have five case managers up from two, so that people can sit and meet with a case manager, not just once, hand them money, and send them off. We're meeting with them, we're trying to figure out how we can help them, we're doing assessments. We have job assessments just to see what they would be good at. We do a full career services down to a one-hour every single day. So anyone who walks in our building who doesn't have a job or looking for a better job, at least once a day, they can sit down for that class. We also offer a half-day workshop for them, as well as we're connecting them with one-on-one job coaches. So everything that we're doing this year is really focusing on how to get people out of the situation that they have unfortunately come into. So I think I did that as fast as I possibly could.
You did great.
I gave you an impact document that has everything, and I have 13 seconds.
Yeah, wow. You did good.
Any questions?
Any questions, Counsel?
What does LBC stand for?
LPC, a Licensed Professional, sorry, Licensed Professional Counselor.
Okay. Yeah, CCA's come a long way from being a phone tree for fire to where it is today. It's pretty awesome.
53 years we've been doing this.
Wow, all right. Well, we appreciate you being here tonight.
Thank you.
And doing it in that timeframe.
Y'all have a good evening.
Everybody else needs, no.
Thank you.
Well, just thanks for breaking it down to what those served in our community. It's not always done, and it's kind of an eye-opener that our community has needs across this backcountry.
Yes, awesome. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Y'all have a great evening.
You too. Okay, Denton County Friends of the Family.
Did we miss?
Missed Communities and Schools.
Oh, Communities and Schools.
Oh, am I, did I miss somebody?
Communities and Schools.
Oh, I'm going off of this list.
That's...
Wait. Which list do you have?
Same one, I'm following the book.
Oh, you're following the book. I've got the official time.
But it is Communities and Schools, isn't it? Unless they give you a funny one.
I am with Communities and Schools of North Texas.
Yes, you're up, I'm sorry. I looked at the wrong.
Wonderful, that made me a little less nervous. So I appreciate the breaking of the ice. Okay.
It's all community, so I'm sorry. You're up.
Absolutely. My name is Dr. Lindsay Schaefer. I'm the Chief Development Officer at Communities and Schools of North Texas. It is my joy to be here with you all tonight. We are so grateful for the support of the City of Highland Village and the work that we are able to do because of your support. So I'm going to tell you a little bit, as fast as humanly possible, about CIS. I will start with, we are a national model. Communities and Schools National was started in 1977. It is evidence-based and replicable, so we span coast to coast across the US. We're the nation's largest dropout prevention network. Here in Texas, there are 27 affiliates. We are CIS North Texas. We serve students in Denton, Cook, and Wise County. Our largest school district is Lewisville ISD, where we have 22 program, or 22 campuses with an additional four after-school programs. So we have 26 programs right here in LISD. This year, we are on 62 campuses with 75 programs across seven school districts. We added a new district this year as well. Last year, we served 59 campuses with 72 programs. I have to get all my stats right. So that's what I'll be talking about today, is that 59 campuses with 72 programs last year that you all helped support our volunteer initiatives for. We essentially are in school to make sure that our kids stay in school. The mission of Communities and Schools of North Texas is to surround our students with a community of support so they can succeed in school and achieve in life. So we're breaking down their barriers and creating individualized plans of support while they're in school so that we can help them reach their goals after school as well and build stronger communities right where we live. So we have five core beliefs at CIS North Texas. We believe that every child deserves a one-on-one relationship with a caring adult, a safe place to grow and learn, a healthy start to a healthy future, a marketable skill to use upon graduation, and a chance to give back to their community. One of the ways that we do that is by building a very robust volunteer program that you all help support here at the City of Highland Village. So last year, we were able to grow our volunteer base directly here in the city. So we went from 17 volunteers the previous year to 28 volunteers from the City of Highland Village last year, 171 volunteer hours in the 23-24 school year to 258 volunteer hours last year. So we have seen a massive increase, again, in the civic engagement from our folks here in the City of Highland Village, which is so exciting. I am pleased to say that CIS North Texas last year served 6,337 students with case management services. So again, assessing for academics, behavior, attendance, and social service needs, and then creating those individual plans of support for those students. 91% of our students improved in those target areas, attendance, academics, behavior, social service. We saw 98.4% of our seniors graduate, 100% of our students stay in school, and 99.5% of our students advance to the next grade. And we believe a large part of that is the volunteer base that helps be a caring, consistent adult in the life of those children. So we are so grateful for your support. We are hopeful that we might receive it again this year, of course. I did want to share one story about a Highland Village volunteer from last school year. She's actually volunteered in her LISD school for the last five years with the same student, serving as a reading buddy. This student has 11 siblings and deals with some economic disadvantage and a lot of other barriers along the way. English is his second language. She has worked with him consistently, meeting with him for half an hour to 45 minutes a week for the last four or five years. And that student has not only tackled a lot of reading, but has become a leader in his fifth-grade classroom and is serving as the house leader, kind of like Harry Potter houses. It's a very big achievement for that student, and we are so, so proud of the progress that he's made, in large part to his reading buddy. So again, we are so thankful for our volunteers and the work and effort that they do to support our students and our mission here at CIS North Texas. I'd love the chance to answer any questions that y'all have.
Counsel?
So how do you pair the student with CIS, and how does that work? How do you find them?
Great question. We find volunteers everywhere. Similar to the last person, we are at every community event. We're deeply invested in our chambers, we're engaged in our civic groups. I will talk to anyone, anywhere, anytime about CIS North Texas and our mission. So constantly recruiting volunteers. I was speaking to a group at UNT today, as a matter of fact. So we will get our volunteers anywhere. When they go through the application, onboarding, do the orientation, background check that you all help support, at that point, we pair them with a campus, usually of their choosing, that's closest to their home. And then they would meet with their campus site coordinator. So they're CIS NT, Full-Time Degreed Site Coordinator, who's on that campus full-time. They'll do a campus tour, introduction, they'll get to know the volunteer interest, strengths, areas of opportunity to match them successfully to a student. So that when they do make that pairing, it's going to be successful the first time. So the first time that the volunteer actually goes to the campus, they're not meeting with the student, they're meeting with our staff. So it's basically like us getting to know that person so we can make the best bid possible.
And then your staff works with the parents for the kids on the campus? Then that kid, and so the kids identified and then put with the best volunteer?
Exactly. So the students are enrolled in the CIS program. And then our site coordinator at the campus, when a volunteer signs up, will meet with the volunteer and then make that pair based on that. So yes, we're trying to make the most successful match the first time around.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other? Thank you so much.
Thank y'all so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you for being here. Denton County Friends of the Family, and it's you this time. I don't care what anybody else says, you're going to get to go next. Come on down.
Price is Right, hi. First of all, well done, you guys are on time, I mean, to the minute. So thank you so much, Mayor Wilcox. My name is Donna Bloom. I'm the Director of Legal Services at Denton County Friends of the Family, and I have the great honor to present to you today about Denton County Friends of the Family. Highland Village has been a supporter of ours for many years. I'm sure most of you are familiar with us. We are the sole provider of domestic violence and sexual assault services in Denton County. Most people, when they think about Friends of the Family, think about us as, think about us as an emergency shelter. That's typically what people think about when they think about domestic violence. But the truth is that the vast majority of services that we provide do not help happen in an emergency shelter setting. The vast majority of the services we provide happen either in our outreach offices, what we call non-residential services. So clients need all kinds of things when they're either trying to leave an abusive relationship or they're dealing with sexual violence in their home. I run the legal services program, so I'm an attorney. I represent clients in protective orders, in custody matters, and divorce, if that's necessary. I manage three attorneys on my staff, and then we have a legal team, support staff. We provide advocacy services, that's more like the case management services that you heard the professional from CCA talking about. Those are those practical problem solvers, right? Like what's necessary to get somebody out of a dangerous situation and back onto their feet? And that requires a lot of work. Those advocates also do a lot of criminal justice advocacy, so we will work here with your Highland Village Police Department. You may not know that Friends of the Family is who the Highland Village Police Department would reach out to if there's been a sexual assault in your community. And that person has to go to the hospital and get what's called a SANE exam. Friends of the Family runs the 24-hours, seven-day-a-week crisis hotline that fields those calls and then gets the SANE nurse out to the hospital. And then we have a volunteer advocate 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that responds to those sexual assaults at the hospital as well. We have a whole clinical staff of what you would imagine these Licensed Professional Counselors, but also we have a very well-developed child play therapy program. So we're probably the single largest provider of play therapy services to children in Denton County. We provide, we have a waiting list, unfortunately, for those services, which is why support from Highland Village comes in handy. Because as you know, sometimes the funds that you guys are able to provide are, can go into our general revenue instead of the sort of grant-driven that's really specific to a certain need. And so we're able to plug holes or needs that we have within the agency with the clients that we serve. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, but I would tell you that I understand that last year, we had 33 victims from Highland Village that we provided services to. That could have been a crisis call all the way to legal services that can take many, many hours. If any of you have had to hire a family law attorney at all, I hope you haven't, but we're pretty expensive, and we happen to be free for our clients.
Counsel? Counsel? Anybody have any questions?
Great. Thank you guys so much for your support.
Wow. Appreciate you. Okay, Denton County MHMR. Uh-oh. You're not going to go again. No.
Good evening, y'all.
Good evening.
My name is Emily Daniel, and I'm here on behalf of the Denton County Loss Team, which is supervised by Denton County MHMR Center. Loss in this case stands for Local Outreach to Suicide Survivors. So our mission is simple but deeply important. With support from the Denton County Medical Examiner's Office, we provide immediate compassionate and ongoing support for individuals who have lost a loved one to suicide. When tragedy strikes, the Loss Team is there, side by side, on scene with Highland Village law enforcement, chaplains, and crisis response to help survivors navigate those first devastating hours and connect them to hope and healing. This is work that our team has been doing for a decade now, and we've served over 2,000 individuals. The work we do is entirely dependent on our dedicated volunteers, as well as external funding through grants and donations. This is why tonight, I'm requesting support from Highland Village to allow our Loss Team Coordinator to attend the National Loss Conference, as well as to print some updated outreach and postvention resources, materials for our community. Thanks to your generosity, last year, or earlier this year, I was able to attend the National Loss Team Conference. We also work off of a fidelity model. So the funding would make tangible difference in three ways. Firstly, the National Conference brings together loss teams from across the country to share best practices, new research, and strategies regarding work with suicide loss survivors who are a population at higher risk of suicide themselves. Our team's attendance would ensure that our community's program reflects the most effective, evidence-based approaches to survivor care. I chair our county's Suicide Prevention Coalition, as well as the Denton County Behavioral Health Leadership Team Suicide Prevention Work Group, which is always a mouthful to say. Through the connections I made at this year's Loss Conference, I was given the tools to create a collaborative countywide suicide postvention plan, which will allow us to effectively and efficiently respond to the high-profile and adolescent suicides that we see too often in our community. My colleagues and I have already begun to adapt this plan to meet the needs of Denton County, and I feel that what I learned at this year's conference was invaluable. Secondly, a portion of the funds will go towards printing updated brochures, cards, and outreach materials. These help law enforcement, hospitals, and community partners easily connect survivors to our team when a loss occurs. It's often a small card that's handed out at the right moment that opens a door to healing. Lastly, every connection we make can prevent further tragedy, strengthen community resilience, and save lives. I believe that the lessons and materials gained through this funding will benefit our entire county for years to come. In short, this is not simply a request for travel or for printing. It's an investment in our county's capacity to respond to loss with compassion and competence. It ensures that when suicide touches a family in Highland Village, they are not alone. So on behalf of our volunteers, our partners, and the survivors we serve, thank you for considering this request and for your ongoing commitment to the well-being of our community.
Thank you. You're good. You're all good. There might be, anybody have a question?
It's good to know there's a service like that, because families just don't know what to do. So thank you.
It's a good service. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Enabling Movement Foundation. She brought prompts.
Oh.
Yeah, prompts.
First of all, I want to thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come talk to you. We're just a small organization. We've been in existence since 2019. That's when it was established, but I didn't retire till 2023. And that's when I started. I'm Julie Brown. I'm the founder of Enabling Movement Foundation. I'm a physical therapist and retired to follow my dream of opening up an adaptive gym and providing specialized services for the disabled. So maybe you've been around the trails and seen our adaptive bikes that we have. But what we're doing right now is we offer adaptive cycling on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month, and we go to five different trails. One of them is here in Highland Village, which is where I live also. And y'all have a great trail at that Double Tree Ranch. In fact, our last ride will be there. But we can accommodate any age, any level of disability. They can ride these trikes at the same speeds that we do, which make it so much fun and that we, as able-bodied people, take for granted. This gives opportunity for the disabled to enjoy the same things that we are able to do. We have had people from age three and a half years old to 69 years old participate with very severe disabilities to minimal disabilities. We have autistic people that are nonverbal that become verbal when they ride on these rides, because they're having so much fun. And it's just a joy just to watch them enjoy it. But our other thing that we recently opened up this year is the Adaptive Gym, which we teamed up with Special Abilities of North Texas. And they gave us a place in their gym where we can bring in outside people by appointment only, and they can utilize the specialized equipment. We have an overhead lift with partial weight-bearing slings. We have standing frame, virtual reality, different things like that. And it gives any of the disabled the chance to move, because the freedom to move is so important. And as we age, it's so important that we're able to move just to improve our overall health and wellness. And not everybody has that same opportunity. So I can answer any questions, if you have any questions. But we hope that you'll consider us for funding some of the specialized equipment. As you know, like some of the bikes that we use, the cheapest one might run $8,500 and the more expensive one could be up to $15,000. Our bikes, we have a captain, and then, so we each set up, it takes two specialized bikes for a disabled to ride. And so that can be a significant amount of money. We raise our money. Our biggest fundraiser is through our golf tournament, which we just had. But, and we've been getting, you know, some small grants to help us with that, but.
Okay. Counsel?
How many riders do you have?
We have, well, we had, in 2024, there were 65 rides that we had. Many of them are repeat riders. So I would say there's probably 15 consistent riders that come and ride. But they love it. They keep coming back, and it's great. So if you've seen us out on the trail, you can see how much fun they're having and how much fun we're having doing that.
That's awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Friends of the Flower Mountain Public Library.
Well, I've been here before. I actually recognize a few of the members of the council here. And I actually remember the one person who always asks a question. So hopefully, I can survive this without too much turmoil. Because I'm, you know, electronically challenged, I decided to try something totally new and different. And that's to do it from my phone. How cool is that? Anyway, the library, the Flower Mountain Library, is very appreciative of your support. And through the years, we've always been able to count on you to provide us funding to make our services and whatever better. I want to touch on a number of different things that we're working. And I guess the big thing is, we've become very aggressive this year, and we're going to expand the Creation Lab. People wonder what it is. And it's a lab where you can do all kinds of creative things. One of the most popular is engraving glass and engraving brass. And you can do that in the library. And also, if you write a book, you can actually bind your book in the library. And it's a service that's pretty unique, and actually, many people use it. Highland Village is eligible for every program that the library offers. And so there's a number of them. And they are involved with a number of important things and a lot of fun things. Through this past year, we've had over 312,000 individuals visit. And people say, well, that's really nice. So how many people are from Highland Village? Well, right now, we have 2,500 Highland Village individuals who carry library cards for the Flower Mountain Library. And that number is great, you know? And we want to make sure that number increases. And so the expansion of this Creation Laboratory, we feel, is going to make a big difference. Also, we're planning an outside playground that will be a learning experience for children. And it's totally different from almost any library that is in the area. Those are two projects that we have assumed a significant responsibility of. The Creation Lab, we will be working different types of programs to create enough money to pay for all the equipment in that area, and also all the equipment in the outside area for the kids. And so it's a really neat idea. And the nice thing about it, you're getting really cheap. You're not cheap. We're cheap. It amounts to only a dollar per person. And that can grow to significantly more. And I challenge you to address your friends and neighbors. You know, the library's just not for teeny kids. The library's for everybody. And I'm sure even you, as a group, would probably have a good time there, too. So anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I have one.
Hello, Rhonda.
First of all, I was one of the first, when I was in Girl Scouts, that stocked the first library in the little old house in Flower Mountain with Girl Scouts.
Oh, you did.
Mm-hmm. Made it to the newspaper, found the clipping a few months ago. But so on your Board of Directors, is anybody from Highland Village on it?
Well, the Board of Directors of the, you mean of the Friends of the Flower Mountain Library? Right now, there is not. But we openly solicit you to tell people to contact us. And we actually have two openings.
Oh, do you? Okay. Because 15%, 2,500 is 15% of our population. That's a pretty good population number. So it might behoove one of our citizens to apply to be on the board.
That's a great idea. So what are you doing next Thursday?
Yeah, Rhonda.
Well, you know, I'd have to check my, well, it's soccer, I see games. I would love to do it. I'll go look it up, actually.
Okay. Well, here, I'll give you one of my.
It brings it full circle.
Okay, here, here.
I will. He was ready for me.
You go right ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else have any questions?
Okay. And remember, you can check out books from your home. You don't even have to go to the library. They're electronic. And you can sit in front of your computer and just say, oh, go to the library and pick a book out and start reading it. And then you never have to go into the library if you are busy.
Does your stuff work on the fire tablets?
Yes.
Okay. I do that for Aunt Mary in Louisiana. It's awesome. She doesn't have to leave the nursing home. It's awesome for your.
It is really good, especially if you're pregnant and having a baby. You can stay at home and have your baby.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for being here. All right. Heart of the City. I don't know which one of you.
I don't know how I'm supposed to top that.
I don't know either.
That was great. Thank you, brother, for that. Listening with me today, I have Danny Mile as our Director of Operations, Jack Wyman is our Vice President of Advancement, and my name's Rob Veal. I'm the founder of Heart of the City. We're the new guys in town. In fact, just finishing up our sixth year, moving into our seventh year. And I wanted you to know also that we are Highland Village. Heart of the City was founded right here. I live on Selmaire. Danny lives on Patricia, Double Tree. And so we're local. And we are investing in Highland Village. And one of our board members also is here in Highland Village as well. We have 163 volunteers that are just Highland Village residents. It takes about 225 volunteers every week to accomplish all the things that Heart of the City does. We serve at about six different locations all over South Denton County. We have Carrollton, Frisco, two, Fixtonby, three in Louisville, two in Denton. And so the organization has grown considerably. So that's why it requires so many volunteers, and we've been blessed that way. But in addition to 163 volunteers, we have 79 neighbor families that we have actively served here in Highland Village. In fact, your staff is very much aware of what we do. They have my business card. And Cody, from time to time, there'll be maybe a code enforcement issue. And he calls me up and says, hey, Rob, can you help this family? And we do. We come out and we cut down trees or whatever it might be that we need to take care of here in Highland Village. But we love our community. We also have between probably about 75 to 100 donors here in Highland Village. And actually, our largest donor ever is here in Highland Village. So we are Highland Village. And in that, we want to let you know that we appreciate your media department. Your media department actually produced our video this year for the Nonprofit of the Year Award, and we received the Nonprofit of the Year Award. So we're very gracious of that. You have a fine department, and we always look forward to working with them. But I want to basically share with you a couple of stories. And I'm not going to tell those stories. I'm going to ask some guys to come up. And you heard last week in the news where there was a murder-suicide. Maybe you caught that in the news. And it was at Northwood Mobile Home Park. And that was on Wednesday. On Thursday, now this was just last week, on Thursday, I got word that the woman that was murdered was one of our neighbors. And so Danny, if you would step up and tell us what happened, because what happened then? See, she was supposed to get food on Thursday, but she was killed the day before. So tell us what happened.
Yeah, so Danny Mile, I'm the Director of Operations. It means I'm the boots-on-the-ground guy. I'm the one who is seeing these people as they come in the door. It was an interesting day, to say the least. But what made it more interesting and sad and joyful all at the same time was the fact that six of those family members showed up that day. They came not to get food. They didn't want food. They came because they felt like that they would receive what they always receive when they come to Heart of the City. And that is a sense of hope, a sense of joy, a sense of somebody that's going to love on them, care for them, and be in their corner for them. And we've done that. I'm in contact with them currently to see what else we can do with them. But that's the reason why so many people have started coming to us. I mean, I don't remember how many it is now. It's in the tens of thousands of people that have come to see us over the years. And that's the reason why, because it's more than food. It's more than clothes. It's more than the life skills coaching and things like that that we do. It's much more than that.
One of our core values is community. And you were asking about, since we started in 2019, 21,000 families have come across our door. They're from 61 different countries, and they speak all kinds of languages. Our staff now, we have two full, or three full-time people. That's two of them. And, but our staff is bilingual. We can work with pretty much anybody doing that. And we serve about 600 families a week in South Denton County. So any questions? We enjoy working with Highland Village, by the way. Great team.
Go ahead. Oh, you guys have the trucks, right?
Yes.
Okay, I see them every morning. Every morning, I see y'all's trucks when I go to work. And it kind of makes me smile, knowing that they're going to go help somebody.
The beauty of, we have retail partnerships with like Walmart, Kroger, Tom Thumb, those stores. And the guys pick up three days a week. It's really a good deal.
Did I just say where you had an open house?
Yeah, that's tomorrow, as a matter of fact. If you want a photo opportunity, a ribbon cutting is happening at 11 o'clock.
Oh, tomorrow.
At our new location. Heart of the City is proudly debt-free. We've never taken on any debt. And we just completed a little bit over a $300,000 building completely debt-free. And we have the ribbon cutting tomorrow. Flower Mountain Chamber will be there. Louisville Chamber will be there.
What's, where?
Where?
At 2021 North Mill, our main location. We doubled our space. You know where the golf course is in Louisville?
Uh-huh.
Okay, it's right in that neighborhood. 2021 North Mill, just come there. And if you played at the golf course before, my dad was the golf pro there, and our family built it. So what else?
Anything else? Perfect. Thank you. Thanks, Rob.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Danny. Thank you all.
They forgot a D in dream.
Journey to Dream is next.
I'm going to move this down. Good evening. I'm Nisa Greider. I'm the CEO, LCCA, and now a trauma counselor. So doing a lot. We've been in the community for 21 years. We have a campus in Louisville, and we have 17 beds. But we have a big announcement that's coming November 1st. We, I, we're expanding. So we are kind of under an LDA, but we are going to be expanding and be able to serve more kiddos. But we have served 245 Highland Village kids. And so people come to our campus, and we are at capacity. But we have become renowned for serving more than just kids that can spend the night there. We have kids that come for food and clothing and mental support. We are partnering. We are partnering with several people or several local franchises that can also support food, or, sorry, I'm very much off-topic, but kids that are in need of food. So if we have excess, we are providing a lot of food to Marcus students that are in need of food and mental health support. So although we do have a campus, and that this request is for our Kyle's place, we are also providing a lot more for those students that are in need. So in my proposal, I said 245, and that's where that number comes from, because we are providing through Shop With Cop, through counseling needs. And so we are providing so much more than our 17-bed capacity support. We have kids that are just showing up, or parents that are asking for support through our case management system. How do we overcome the bullying, social media? We're doing outreach through our social media, so a lot more than just our 17-bed facility. We do have a new curriculum support system that we are reaching out through schools. We're in Briar Hill and also in Marcus. So a lot going on. Sorry, I'm off, a little bit off-topic here, but just really excited of all the things that are happening through our Journey to Dream programs.
Awesome. Counsel, does anybody have any questions?
So for the Highland, that's a high number, 245 kids. So what, I mean, that really concerns me, because that's almost the elementary school size of children. So what can we do in our community to, what is it?
We have seen a lot of mental health challenges. I think, well, with the new Senate bill, it's now referred to as resilience and character building. They tend to shy away from the mental health crisis. But we are seeing a lot of bullying that is happening and a lot of food instability. And so a lot of the students that are reaching out to us and a lot of families that, so we have partnered with Chick-fil-A. We are getting about 2,500 pounds of Chick-fil-A. And we have a lot of families that are reaching out to us that are not meeting the daily food, their daily food requirements. So a lot of the families are reaching out to us for that support. And we are seeing that mostly through the Marcus High School. And we are providing, and it's just, you know, they're Googling, "Where can we get support?" And we're getting those calls. And happily, we are partnering with Chick-fil-A and Olive Garden and providing those meals for them.
And do they, do they go to someplace to pick this up? Do you meet them at school? Like, how do you get a hold of these kids?
So what happens is they will call us. We will figure out where they are. So right now, we're delivering them to the schools, and the schools are providing them to the students. And same with our Shop With Cop. So we are able to provide 100 students through that. They're nominated through their counselors. So that nomination, those nominations went out on October 15th, and on October 20th, we were full. And 17 of those came from Highland Village kids.
And you work with the parents, too, with all of this?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
And most of those, like I said, a lot of times, the counselors will reach out and say, "Hey, do you have extra of X, Y, Z?" And our answer is always yes. We will figure it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Louisville, ISD Education Foundation.
Hi there.
Hey, Bill.
Ms. Mayor, Chamber, great to see you guys. Thank you all. Always appreciate this opportunity. I know that many of you already know what LEF does, but I did write it down this time so I can cover a couple of more things. My name is Bill Lee. I'm the, I am honored to serve as the Executive Director of the Lewisville Education Foundation, better known as LEF. I thank you so much for allowing me a few minutes to share how your city's support can directly impact the students and teachers of ISD, many who work and live in the Highland Village community. LEF was founded in 1990 with one simple mission, which is to enrich and enhance educational opportunities for all students and teachers in the Lewisville Independent School District. We do this by providing teacher grants, student scholarships, and funding for innovative classroom projects that the district's regular budget cannot cover. This past year alone, LEF distributed almost $400,000 in classroom grants and scholarships. And since our inception, LEF has contributed more than almost $7.5 million back to ISD. Your city's donation would allow LEF to continue building programs that strengthen the various schools that helped make Highland Village such a special place to live and raise a family, which I did for 28 years. Specifically, your support would help fund teacher innovation grants, giving educators the resources to bring creative hands-on learning to their classrooms, student scholarships, ensuring that outstanding Highland Village graduates have the financial help that they need to continue their education, district-wide programs that address needs in mental health, literacy, and STEM learning in all areas, that prepare our kids for success far beyond the classroom. These funds don't just buy supplies. They inspire learning, confidence, and opportunity for every child touched by ISD. So on behalf of the Lewisville Education Foundation, we thank you so much for your consideration and to once again partner with LEF. Together, we can ensure that Highland Village continues to be known not only for its beauty and quality of life, but also for its commitment to excellence in education. We thank you very much for all your support that Highland Village has always done for us.
Thank you. Counsel, does anybody have?
Mr. Lee, thank you for the information you provided. What we've got before us in the write-up says that you support the students through scholarships and improved learning opportunities, but you also say teacher grants. Can you expand on teacher grants and how it helps them?
Yeah, mainly, for years when I was on the board, that, those were the two major things that LEF was known for, was teacher grants and student scholarships. The grants are, it's the, one of the most exciting things that I think we do. The scholarships are one thing, but the grants actually help these teachers with projects that they don't normally would have the funding for. These are school projects, these are science projects, these are microscopes. These are things that have shelf life for years for the education. We say that the, that the grants touch students and so many more students for years down the road. And some of them, some of it could be a $500 grant, some of them are a $2,500 grant. The beauty is that, once these teachers apply for these, they don't know that they've won. We have a third-party group that reads for these grants and make the determinations based upon the money and based upon what the criteria, and then these are presented to the teachers.
And these are grants that are requested by teachers for specific programs to enhance children's?
Exactly. They, they come up with an idea that they may need for their classroom, something that they can't, other than to maybe come out of their own pocket, it would never happen.
Right.
And so they're very thankful to get it. And we do about, we just finished, we also do campus grants. So we do teacher grants for specific teachers, but we also do campus grants that are requested by the principals. And it's kind of the same, the same type thing. But we give about, this year was about 70 grants that went out this year that we just presented a few months ago.
That's great.
I've had the opportunity to be present when they give out those grants. And the kids are thrilled, the teachers are shocked and surprised, and...
It's one of the most exciting days forever.
The money that Highland Village gives stays in Highland Village and goes to the, to the teachers or the schools that are in Highland Village.
That's good.
Yeah.
What was the last grant in Highland Village, or what was it for?
A garden at Heritage, Heritage, I was there for a garden.
Were you there? Thank you.
I was there for that one.
Thank you for that.
It's always good to know, we hear it and to know.
Yeah, yeah. And I can certainly provide you, I have a listing on my desk because we just went through this the other day.
Oh, it was at McAuliffe, I'm sorry.
Everyone, it was McAuliffe, I think.
McAuliffe, yeah.
So I'm sure Ms. Mattingly had something to do with that.
She did. And then we went to Heritage and gave one, and now I'm drawing a blank.
Was it the headphones?
I'm not sure. I can't remember.
I'll find out. We have pictures. One thing that we like to do is go back out weeks later, and we take pictures and video. We interview the teacher and find out how it's been used. And we can send that back to you on the ones that were specific for the Howard.
It's always a really good thing. Counsel, on this end, anybody have a question?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, Lewisville Lake Symphony. Hey, Nancy.
Well, good evening. Mayor Willie Cox and council members, it's nice to see you again. For those that don't know me, I'm Nancy Bright, the Executive Director of the Lewisville Lake Symphony. And I'm here on behalf of our musicians and our board and our volunteers, and most importantly, our patrons, to ask you for your continued partnership through a $4,500 grant. I know that's a big ask, but I think there's a big upside for the city in doing that. As has been the case for many, many years, Highland Village residents continue to be our most loyal patrons and strongest advocates. Nearly a quarter of our season ticket holders live right here. And per capita, Highland Village has the highest concert attendance of any city in the area, which is amazing considering your relative size to everybody else. And on top of that, your residents also give very generously of their time and their money. 10% of our board members and 30% of our donation dollars come from Highland Village residents. And we have many, many dedicated volunteers who also live here. So it's clear to me that they truly value the arts. The city's support will allow us to celebrate the connection publicly. We will continue to recognize Highland Village as the municipal sponsor of our Peter and the Wolf Children's Concert, which is by far our most popular event, most well-attended event of the entire season. And the city's name will appear in event signage and programs and publicity materials. I put this in your packet. And on the back, you know, very prominently at the top, is Highland Village, because we value that support and appreciate it very much. It's really a wonderful way for you to highlight your commitment to the arts and your strong support for accessible cultural experiences for your citizens. Your support also makes a difference even closer to home. Through your partner, our partnership with ISD, every third grader in Highland Village attends a live educational concert with the Lewisville Lake Symphony. For many of those children, probably most of those children, it's the first time they've ever experienced or heard a full orchestra in person. And that's an experience that can spark curiosity and creativity and the desire to play an instrument and a lifelong love of music. And I know some of you have personal experience with this because you have kids or grandkids who have gone through the program, and you've seen their excitement. So when Highland Village supports the symphony, it's not just about performances, that's important. It's about community connection and youth education and civic pride. This grant helps bring people together, gives the city meaningful visibility, and supports an organization that's been enriching the life of the community for more than 40 years. So on behalf of everyone at the symphony, our musicians, our board, our volunteers, and especially our patrons, I just want to say thank you for believing in the power of music and for helping the arts continue to thrive right here in your community.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments?
Oh, I love that kids get exposed to Peter and the Wolf.
I'm going to get this, because I'm so heartbroken.
I say, "Thank you for the Peter and the Wolf for the kids."
Yeah, that's, you know, that's a joy every year. And it just, we've had such good response to that.
All the kids love it. My kids now, we're suffering through Peter and the Wolf OBO.
Really?
Yeah, I'm seventh grade, but, thank you.
That's the first seed we plant, is Peter and the Wolf when they're really little. And then if they go through the third-grade program, they get a different, you know, then they really start to think, "Which instrument would I really want to play?" And so it's, it's just a building process for the kids to learn and to get involved.
Thank you, Nancy. It's good to see you. Thanks for coming out tonight. Okay, Love Packs.
My name is Hillary Cross, and I am one of the co-leads for the Love Packs Lewisville Chapter, which actually also includes Lewisville, Flower Mound, Highland Village, obviously. I'm sorry, I'm sure, I'm going to move that down a bit. So in our community, we have a portion of students who rely on their breakfast and lunch and snacks at school. And when the school closes for some reason, like a school holiday, then they don't always have enough access to food. And if you're not aware, although I'm sure most of you are, ISD has a school holiday just about every month. So we either have a three- or four-day weekend, or we have Thanksgiving and spring break, which are nine days, or we have our winter break, which ISD usually schedules for about a 19-day holiday. So as you can imagine, particularly as we move into those nine days, 19-day breaks, that can be really alarming for a student or a family who does not know where their next meal is coming from. So Love Packs stepped in to try and fill in that gap of services. We have great summer feeding programs. We have supportive food pantry programs. But at the time that Love Packs began, and still to this day, there were no programs that were targeting those specific school holiday closures during the academic year. So a Love Pack is a breakfast, lunch, and a snack. And our goal was to make it as simple as possible. Sorry, a breakfast, lunch, and snack for each day this child is out of school. And our goal was to make it as simple as possible without adding a whole lot of additional work to our school systems. We knew that our counselors and teachers are already doing a lot of work. And so we, it's not a program that the school has to enroll a child into. If the teacher or the counselor at the school believes the child is going to be at risk of not having enough food for the upcoming holiday, they include that child in their count for the upcoming holiday. Each month, we ask the school, "How many Love Packs do you need?" We work through our community to get the donations. The volunteers come and pack it up. We have volunteers who show up at our facility, which is here in Highland Village, with their vehicles. We load the Love Packs into their vehicles, and they drive them to the schools and unload them there. And the schools help the students get them home. Our three- and four-day weekend bags are just grocery sacks, so they're easy enough for a student to put into a backpack and take home or carry in their lap. Our nine-day boxes, they start to weigh about 35 pounds, so that does get a little more challenging to get those home. So they do have to coordinate with a caregiver or the bus driver to help the students get those home. Or in some cases, they can open them up and send them a little bit at a time. And I'm sorry, I wasn't watching the clock. So, but just since I'm short on time, I do want to tell you that your funding last year helped us serve students here in Highland Village. We serve all of the ISD schools in Highland Village. I will also tell you that last year, to date for October, we had sent home 55 Love Packs to the Highland Village schools. Even with Highland Village Elementary closing and those students being shuffled to other schools, we have to date sent home 90 Love Packs this year. We are seeing a drastic increase in the request for services across the board in ISD, including right here in Highland Village. Because ISD is an open enrollment district, and we are an anonymous program, we can't tell you exactly how many Highland Village students and families are served. But just to give you a frame of reference, for the schools, Marcus, Heritage, McAuliffe, and Briar Hill, we've sent home 90 Love Packs this year already.
Wow.
So I've gone over my time. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that you might have about Love Packs.
Comments, questions, Counsel?
And how your support would get used here for your own community.
Anybody have anything? You have a great facility. I've had the opportunity to visit that.
We are very grateful to have it. We are very grateful to have it.
Yeah. Well, thank you for coming out tonight. We appreciate you and all that you do. Love thy neighbor.
My name is Becky Warren, and I'm here on behalf of Love Thy Neighbor, and in particular, our Clothing Assistance Program, which Highland Village has been very supportive over the years. I think we may be one of your smaller nonprofits, but you've been very kind to us over the years. We, our Clothing Assistance Program is made up strictly of all volunteers.
We are currently housed at New Beginnings Church, which they have graciously given us space, so we pay no rent. We're basically debt-free. We have very little expense. But the funds that we received from Highland Village and other sources are used to purchase items that we do not receive in donations. Our donations are generally new or gently-used clothing, and we keep only the best of the best. We have a clothing closet, which is open on the first and third Saturday of each month, and it's open to the public. The shoppers are met, the clients, when they come in are met with the personal shopper. We try and recruit some of the high school students to help us out, especially those who speak Spanish. We have a lot of Spanish come in and shop. And they're taken from station to station. And in your hand, you see, you have pictures of what the clothing closet actually looks like. When the families come in and shop, they get tops, bottoms, shoes, socks, underwear. The socks and the underwear must be purchased new. We cannot accept those in donations. The other things we have to shop for, unfortunately, are men's jeans, because apparently men don't clean out their closet as often as everyone else does. So we do a lot of thrift shopping. And even thrift shopping prices have gone up. In the numbers I gave you, from 2024 through May of 2025, was we saw over 4,600 individuals and gave out over 46,000 items of clothing. From May through the end of September of this year, we saw an additional 1,050 clients come in and gave out 2,891 items of clothing. Of those numbers, total for, we go by zip code. So the Highland Village zip code, we gave out 100, or excuse me, 260 clients, we gave out over 1,400 items of clothing. We're now getting the coats out. We've just transitioned from summer to fall and winter clothing, and we will have the coats out, so everyone will be eligible to get a coat. We're very small. I think we may be your smallest nonprofit, but you've been very kind and generous to us over the years. We welcome anybody who wants to come and take a tour. We're very proud of our facility. It's very clean, very neat, and we like to keep it personal. So if you would come in shopping, you would get a personal shopper that would walk you through and help you pick out your items of clothing.
Rhonda, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
What is your age demographic for Highland Village residents?
I'm sorry?
What is your age demographic for your Highland Village residents?
You know, I really can't, we don't ask the age. You have to be over 18 to shop. Generally, we have a mother and/or a father come in, but they may have 10 in their family that they're shopping for. So if I had to guess, I would say maybe early 40s, because the mother may come or the father may come, but then they have, bring their children with them. So we have a rural mixture. But if you would come in, we could not take an individual under the age of 18 shopping by themselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
MLK.
Hello, Mayor.
How are you?
It's so good to see you, Council. Good evening. I am Jaclyn Shaw. I am the press liaison for the MLK, North Texas MLK Celebration. And I have with me tonight my chair, which is Judge Joan Parker Sumner. So it's nice not to be here by myself tonight. But I'm here wanting to share with you our MLK, our North Texas 33rd Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration. Our theme this year is Better Together: Making the Dream a Reality. Our celebration this year is Monday, January 15th, January 19th, 2026, at 6:00 PM at Marcus High School Arena. For this, we have LISD participants, and the participants are starting from fourth grade to 12th grade. Our categories are, we have four categories. Four categories are essay, creative, photography, 3D sculpture, hand-drawn art. Out of the four categories, we have first, second, and third for each category in each grade, from seventh to, from fourth grade to 12th grade. Last year, we gave out over $8,000 in prize money to the LISD students. Last year, we had winners from Highland Village Elementary School, also Briar Hill Middle School. And at the end of the year, the, I mean, at the end of the presentation, the following week, the winners, the winners winning display will be at Louisville Grand Theater. So they will be there from January 24th all the way to February 21st. So on display for parents, family, the community to come out and look at these beautiful. We have some very gifted students in LISD, so we are very proud. And Mayor, thank you so much for always supporting us. Thank you for Highland Village for always supporting us. But thank you for always answering my call, Mayor, and coming out and participating in the MLK program and handing out those prizes. So we do appreciate that, and we would like to invite each and every one of you to come January 19th and, you know, participate. It's a wonderful event, and we take very pride in it, pride in it, and with, in the LISD students.
Council, anybody have any comments? Oh, go ahead, Rhonda.
I think it's awesome that you include homeschoolers, it says. So how does a homeschool parent enter, or do they go to your website? Like, how do we get this information out to homeschoolers?
Yeah, they go to the website.
Okay.
So it's northtexas.org.
Thank you. I'm gonna share that with homeschool families. That's pretty awesome.
And I have had the opportunity to go and participate. And if you haven't gone, you should. And guys, we have very talented young people in our schools. It's amazing, the talent that's there.
It is.
And we appreciate everything that y'all do to help show that talent, so thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Absolutely. Have a good evening. You too. PD Place. Gee, you're gonna have to squat down, Terry.
I'm used to it. Squat down and reach for somebody else. I'm Terry Allen, and I'm currently the PD Place Board Chairman. I'd like to start by thanking the City of Highland Village for your continued support and investment in our mission, making healthcare a reality for every child. For 30 years, PD Place has made healthcare a reality for underserved children by providing quality primary care pediatrics and mental health services for children residing throughout North Texas, and specifically for this funding, the City of Highland Village. This year, PD Place expects to provide primary health care services to approximately 6,000 children in 22,000 office visits. PD Place operates three clinics, two in Louisville and one in Denton. We provide preventative or well-child care for all ages, sick care, chronic illness management, and mental health services. The only criteria for services is the child must be uninsured or receiving Medicare or Children's Health Insurance Program, its CHIP benefits. For the past 12 months, PD Place has served 23 children who live in Highland Village, and that's slightly higher than the prior year. I'd like to share three significant milestones and issues in 2025 for PD Place. Number one, we doubled the capacity of mental health services with additional licensed professional counselors. Number two, the percentage of patients who are uninsured is steadily rising, from 16% in 2023 to 22% this year. Number three, continued rising costs to employ healthcare professionals and general costs of medical supplies and laboratory testing. As I mentioned, PD Place has seen a rise in the number of uninsured patients over the past three years, from 977 uninsured children in 2023, 1,248 last year. And through September of this year, we've already served 1,189 uninsured children. With the reductions in Medicare funding, we know more and more children we see will be uninsured. So again, thank you for your support and consideration.
Thank you. Council, anybody having questions, comments?
All right, thank you.
Say, where are the clinics within?
We need to do a tour.
The original main clinic is on Old Orchard in Louisville. So it's the center where the Big Lots was, behind that, on Old Orchard. The second one is at Central Elementary. And the latest one, the third one, is in Denton at Fred Moore's School. So it's been a great partnership with the school districts to help us expand. Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Terry. All right, Salvation Army.
Good evening. It's good to see each of you tonight. And my wife and I, we're the newbies in the community. We've lived, we've just moved here, been here for three months. So I'll try to share as much information as I know and pass it on to you. What we do, the Salvation Army, we actually oversee, my wife and I oversee, the Salvation Army's work in Denton County. And at the Louisville location, we have a number of activities that we do each and every week. One of the things that we do daily is a feeding program from noon to 1:00, open to all the community. No matter who you are, where, if you want to have lunch, come join us. And a lot of times, whenever we feed folks, it's not just a feeding. But, you know, I see a lot of loneliness, and people just want to come out and have community. And so we're able to do that. We also do showers every morning, or not every morning, three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, where we allow folks that don't have access to a shower to come and take a shower. And then from, on Tuesday and Thursday, we also have client-choice food pantry, where we're able to allow people to come and shop and have, find food for their households. We average about 120 families per month in that. In our feeding program, daily feeding program, we have about 60 to 80 people a day. And saying all that, we get to meet a lot of folks in our community. And a lot of times, it's that initial meeting that we can find out really what the greater need is in talking with them and building relationships with them. And where you all help out is that we get to help out people with their prescriptions. And so whenever we're talking to people, we know they may have a food need or looking for a place-to-live need. But meeting those medical appointments and being able to help out with prescriptions, that's where you all help us out. And so we thank you for that. Providing transportation to doctors, we do bus and train tickets, also gas vouchers. And so we do that as well. There again, that's through your contribution and being, we'll help out with that. But it's an honor to serve our community. And as I'm new here, I'm loving our community and glad to join forces with a number of the agencies that are speaking here tonight. We work very well with others, and so thank you.
Thank you for being here, Council. Anybody?
I'm curious. How many people that you see on average are repeat, consistent?
There is quite a large number, but that's something, as my wife and I are coming, we, I don't like to hear the term "regular." If they're a regular, what have we done? And so that's why with our case management, what we do is we want to sit down and get to the, down to the nitty-gritty and see what's causing you to continually come back. And so if it's an addiction, we have places that we can get people to go to and help them get there and be able, Salvation Army, just in the North Texas area, we have two adult rehabilitation centers that we can refer people to. We have a shelter downtown Dallas that is a beginning spot for that. And there, again, other agencies that we can call upon. So that's something that we don't like to see regulars. Now, our feeding program, there are a lot of regulars. And like I said, it's not that they're hungry, per se, they're just lonely. And we want them to come, and we want them to be a regular and to meet with them. Good question. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, thank you so much for coming out, and we'll be ringing the bell soon.
That's right. Just the season.
That's right.
Thank you so much.
Real soon, thank you. Span, Meals on Wheels of Denton County.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council. My name is Leighton Woodall. I'm a Highland Village resident, as well as a Director of Community Relations for Span Meals on Wheels. I want to thank you for tonight for having us, so I can speak about our programs. Every weekday, our volunteers deliver hot, nutritious home meals to homebound seniors, many of whom live alone, face barriers to mobility and social connection. For many, our volunteer may be the only person they see all day. Some statistics out throughout Denton County, currently in Denton County, there is a 12.5% food insecurity rate that affects roughly 257,000 people. One in eight seniors is in danger of going hungry, and many suffer from increased malnutrition. We have seen that roughly one-third of older adults face isolation, and several more have expressed feelings of helplessness. In Highland Village, we're seeing a growing need. Seniors are living longer, but many are also living more isolated lives. Many seniors are no longer able to drive, may struggle with chronic health issues, or the ability to stay independent. Senior Paws is also a program that we have that provides pet food and supplies to the pets of Highland Village's homebound seniors. By supporting Senior Paws, we're not just feeding animals, we're preserving the emotional well-being of the people who love them. These programs are powered by volunteers and donations. However, due to inflation, governmental budget cuts, the need is ever-growing. Tonight, we are respectfully requesting funding to help us increase our ability to reach even more seniors who rely on us for nutrition. With your help, we can ensure that no senior in Highland Village goes hungry, feels forgotten, or has to choose between feeding themselves or their pet. Before I close, I'd like to tell a personal story of my own experience. Before I started working for Span, I was a volunteer for the Meals on Wheels program, and I know, have firsthand knowledge of how incredible this program was. My first day delivering was to a lady in Louisville who was 101 years old.
Wow.
When I went out to her house, one of the first things she said to me was, "Sit. We're gonna talk." So for 45 minutes, we had a conversation about her love of art, her childhood, so many different things. When I would go frequently, she would have me do different things, move things around her home, do different things. So Meals on Wheels is more than a meal. It really is about connection. It's making sure that our seniors get what they need in our community. I want to thank you for having us tonight. Appreciate it. Thank you. Allison, any questions you may have?
Council, anybody having questions?
I just love the doggy paws. I just, I've always, we bring food in and stuff for different, and that's always the animals, because these seniors will always feed their food to their animal first, so...
So a little context of that, the program started by volunteers that went out and would see meals on the floor, and we would ask, "What's your meal on the floor for?" "Well, I have to feed my pet." So then we took that upon ourselves, to go ahead and create this. And it's completely funded by our organization and the volunteers to take care of that as well, because we know how important pets are. And for our senior community, we want to make sure they're doing well, so.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much for having us.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Special Abilities of North Texas.
Good evening. Oh, there we go. My name is Jordan Drake. I am the CEO of Special Abilities of North Texas. I really appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time to share how your partnership directly impacts the residents of Highland Village. So far this year, 11 adults from Highland Village have received more than 8,300 hours of service from Special Abilities. On paper, that might seem like just a number, but in practice, that means skilled, hands-on care that helps people live full, meaningful lives. Of those 11 residents, five hold part-time jobs in the community, three need help in the bathroom, four of them have seizures, two are nonverbal, and two others communicate primarily through sign language. Four are hearing impaired. One primarily uses a wheelchair, but he is also a multi-sport athlete and plays bocce and bowling and baseball and all of the things. One shares a new joke every single day, whether it's funny or not, and another person can play just about any song on the piano. Three of those aces have volunteered at McAuliffe Elementary through a partnership that we've developed with them. All All 11 of them have toured the Dallas Cowboys Stadium on trips with Special Abilities, something that I haven't even gotten to go do. Some of them have gone multiple times. And seven of them I've known personally for over a decade through our shared time at Special Abilities. It's the continuity and community that really makes Special Abilities special and what makes a difference in the lives of these individuals. Every single day, our team provides personal care, including toileting and continent management, suctioning to prevent choking, medication administration, and therapy reinforcement. Any given week, our Aces take yoga and Zumba classes, they go on community outings, they build skills, develop friendships. And those skills and friendships and relationships aren't just for the day or for the week, they're long-term, lifelong skills and goals and relationships that they're creating. All of those families are aging, just like all of us. Many of those families have parents that are in their 60s and 70s that are their primary caregivers. They're never planning on being empty nesters. But the time that their loved ones come to Special Abilities is the time that they get to themselves. They can go to work, they can volunteer in the community, they can rest easy knowing that their loved one is being cared for. There's a huge funding gap between the money that we receive and state funding and the cost that it takes to provide all of these services. And the funding from city council, as well as other grants and municipalities, really helps bridge that gap so that we can provide a higher quality of care than $22 that the state covers.
Okay. Counsel? Anybody have anything?
What's, you're by the Walmart, right?
I am.
So what's the story on that really cool tree carving?
One of our board members had that commissioned, and we met with the artist and kind of talked about different things that we would like to have included on it. And so each of the animals represents something different, and there's a sign next to it. The entire garden area is dedicated to Spud Newton, or he was our board member for a long time, loves Spud so much. And so, you know, there's a raccoon for curiosity and a cardinal for those that we've lost and all kinds of things. So it's a really special little thing that we have out there.
Thank you. It's really cool.
Thank you.
Well, Jordan, thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
And thank you for all that you do in the community. And Studio B.
She dropped an important document.
Uh-oh.
It's hard to believe I can bend down and pick it up. I exercised for the day.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Watson, and I am here on behalf of Studio B Performing Arts. I don't think I've been here since you served the first time, or the time, whatever time that was for you. I think that was the last time I've here, so I've been here. So I've been around Studio B for a while. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit community theater serving Highland Village, just down the street and around the corner. We have been serving the community for 26 years. Our organization is currently 100% volunteer-run, and we offer a variety of opportunities on and offstage for all ages, starting as young as five, going all the way up through adults, anybody who wants to participate in our adult productions. Our focus at the theater is on learning, and we work hard to create a learning positive environment where everyone can come in, try new things, get outside their comfort zone, and allow them to grow while still offering a safe place, you know, to make friends and have a community. We're proud of all the community that we have built, and we love to encourage each other to do our very best. The most rewarding moments for us are when someone shares of positive impact Studio B has had, maybe they saw an amazing performance that inspired them to join the stage themselves, maybe they made the most friends they've ever had, maybe they were an adult who used to do this, and they dusted off their craft and have joined us back on the stage. But it's those stories that make it so much deeper than just the performance that you come to see, and all the wonderful work that goes on behind the scenes to get them show-ready. We have a wonderful team that is behind all of those things. So today, we are asking for your support to continue our technical upgrades. We are always trying to keep up with that, that's something that's always changing. And in the past couple of years, that is what your support has gone towards. We have upgraded our lights, we've upgraded our sound, and it just makes everything come to life even better and helps us keep our, you know, high-quality performances getting better and better every time. We also earmark portions of this money for scholarship needs. We are tuition-based, most of the things that we do. So we want to make sure that we have some extra for anybody who comes to us and says, "Hey, can't do that right now, but my daughter would love to be here, my son would love to be here." So we try to make sure we have some of that set aside to provide those scholarships. So on a personal note, I have been involved with Studio B for about 15 years. I'm currently serving on the board, I served as artistic director, and as you know, in a nonprofit, once they figure out you can do anything, you can do all the things, so you name it, I've done it. I'm also an educator, and I'm also a parent, and so I appreciate all the things that I see going on there as far as the education side. It's not just a performance, again, it's not just what you see when you come to the show, it's all the wonderful work that goes in behind the scenes to build confidence and a community, and we are proud to continue that, and hopefully another 26 years goes by. So again, thank you so much for having all of us. I love hearing everybody's presentation, it reminds you of all the good in the world that's happening. So we appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to do my best.
Questions? Comments?
What's your next show?
Our next show is an adult production called Dashing Through the Snow. It goes up right before the Thanksgiving break, so it's our adult gang getting back together. It's called a southern fried comedy. So it's like, who knows? Who knows what the mishaps? And then we'll be done for this season, and we'll start again in January with our kids' productions again, so.
And the productions are always top-notch.
Thank you. We would love for you to come anytime, bring your kids, bring your family, it's a wonderful experience, so.
It really is. Y'all do a good job there.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
We appreciate you being here tonight.
Have a good night.
Okay, and that, Counsel, is our last presenter tonight, and I just want to say thank you to all of our people that were here tonight, all of our nonprofits, and thank you for everything that they do, because they do an amazing job serving our community. So anyway, does anybody else have anything?
I have one.
Sure.
I don't know if this is the right time to ask, but with all these, we have such a great Highland Village volunteer base, and everyone's helping, and every year, our city helps fund the ones that come in requests. Can we put links on our website to all the charities we help, so people can go and say, "Oh, look, this is in my community, this is in my..." Can we look at that or bring that up for discussion or something?
Something to make a note of and check into, for sure. Okay. All right. Counsel, does anybody else have anything?
Okay.
Not, we are going to adjourn at 7:27, and we will be right back at 7:30.
Hit a little harder that time, accidentally. Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is October the 28th. It is 7:36 PM. And call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present with the exception of Councilman Feaster. And we're going to get started with a prayer led by Councilmember Rhonda Hurst, and she's also going to lead us in the pledges after that.
In honor of all of our nonprofits, please help me pray in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Our Father, we come before you with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance to inspire helping hands and open hearts. May we be vessels of your love, extending kindness and compassion to those in need. Empower us to serve selflessly, reflecting your grace in our actions. Let our hearts be ever willing to embrace others, fostering unity and hope in our communities. Amen. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, we have mayor and council reports on items of community interest. Council, does anybody have anything?
I do.
Okay.
Just a reminder, and Saturday from 10 to 12, on November 1st is the Lower Selmair Park meeting. Bring your ideas and talk about making the Lower Selmair Park even cooler. November 4th is voting for 17 constitutional amendments. Don't forget to vote. There's plenty of websites. You can see what is what, but I encourage everyone to exercise their right to vote. On November 8th, there'll be a special city council meeting workshop. If anybody wants to get up super early on Saturday and join us, that's great. And then, most importantly, on November 11th, for lunch, is the annual Highland Village Business Association Veterans Day luncheon for all of our veterans. And please RSVP by November 3rd, and we're always looking for sponsors to sponsor the veterans meal, and you can find that on our website.
Perfect. Thank you. And I just want to hats off to Parks and all of our city employees because our Concert in the Park series were huge success. Our Texas Fallen Officer concert was awesome. Everybody enjoyed it. It was a great band. So, thank y'all. Thank you to staff and to all the employees for all your hard work on that. We appreciate you. Anybody else have anything? City manager and staff reports.
Mayor, I just have one. I do want to mention, it wasn't across Timbers Gazette, but if you didn't see it, Shake Shack has submitted a permit to be at the old bank building next to Whole Foods. So, we're very excited about that, and we know there's a few other things in the works in the shops as well.
Absolutely.
Glad to see that.
Hi, me too. I can feel the pounds adding up right now. All right. That's all? Okay, visitor comments. Do we have any visitor comments? No? We are moving right along tonight. Consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by a single motion and without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda so that it may be considered separately and/or adding any item to the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Council, does anybody wish to move anything? Okay, we're going to move number 10, consider approval of minutes. The regular city council meeting held on October 14th, 2025. Number 11, consider resolution 2025-3218 authorizing the purchase of an asphalt patch truck from Doggett Freightliner of South Texas LLC through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the inter-local purchasing system. 12, consider resolution 2025-3219 authorizing a contract for tree maintenance services with Golden Tree Maintenance for the Village Park Forest Cleanup Project. Number 13, consider resolution 2025-3220 authorizing a contract for construction services with Dallas Harmony Construction LLC for the Doubletree Ranch Park Trailers Replacement Project through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the inter-local purchasing system. And that is the consent agenda. Council, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Make a motion that we approve consent agenda items 10 through 13 as read.
Perfect. Council, we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, and a second? All right, council, we have a motion and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, 6-0. All right. Matters in closed session? We did meet in closed session under section 551.074. Personnel deliberate the appointment of employment of the municipal court judge. And do I, do I have a motion for, are we there? Resolution?
Resolution number comes after action item 16, but...
Oh, well, hang on then. Just hang tight, I'm sorry. Number 15, consider resolution 2025-3221. Thank you for pointing that out. Amending section 15.02 and 15.03 of the financial policies for the city of Highland Village relating to the city manager's spending authority and exceptions to competitive procurement requirements. That was a mouthful. Thank you.
Good afternoon, mayor, council. In the last legislative update, we, legislation had increased the amount of the city can spend on Public Works projects and goods and services from $50,000 to $100,000 without requiring a competitive bid. It also increased the threshold in which the city must contact to underutilized, historically underutilized businesses for purchases less than, or more than $3,000 and less than $5,000 to, or $50,000 to making $100,000. So, it's increasing it from purchases that are greater than $3,000 to purchases less than $100,000 would require us contact to have vendors. So, we historically have looked at state laws to, as a guiding mechanism of how we set our financial policies on our purchasing authority. So, with this change, we recommend that council increase the amount that the city manager is authorized to make purchases without city approval from $50,000 to $100,000. And then also allowing, authorizing the city manager to delegate purchases from, that are less, or $5,000 or $10,000 from, for department directors.
Okay.
So, our, the final policy also authorize the assistant city manager to act on behalf of the city manager in his absence. And since we no longer have that role at the moment, we recommend a change in the wording to such persons authorized to perform the duties of the city manager in the absence of the city manager. So, I can believe that covers all the changes on it. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. Rhonda?
So, raise it to $100,000 without having to go through the procurement process, the competitive procurement process. But yet, in the next sentence, you have to contact two historically unrise businesses, which would be a procurement process, up to $100,000. So, I'm confused.
Well, it's not technically a procurement process. They're talking about a competitive bid, closed bid procurement process where this is, where you have to contact two historically underutilized businesses just to get a quote from at least, at least two of them in that range of 300, or $3,000 to $100,000.
So, what's the difference between procurement, or, because it says competitive procurement versus a, what's the difference? Like, what's the difference? Because it seems like it's overlapping. Am I making sense, Kevin?
Yeah, it, there's actually two different provisions in the statute. One specifically addresses the hubs solicitation. And again, it's, you have to include them in solicitation for going out and getting quotes, but it doesn't go through the formal sealed bid, sealed proposal advertising process. That's, that's the difference. Anything above the $100,000 is, has to go through the, you know, continue to go through, you know, sealed bids, sealed proposal type process for, for the procurement, whereas others, it's just, you know, pick the phone, send them an email or something like that and say, hey, we've got this opportunity to be involved, you know, would you like to submit a proposal?
Okay. Thank you.
Council, does anybody else have any questions? I will entertain a motion. Yes, sir?
Make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-3221 amending sections 15.02 and 15.03 financial policies of the city of Highland Village relating to city manager's spending authority and exceptions to competitive procurement requirements.
Okay, council, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. All right. Chair's 6-0. Number 16, consider resolution 2025-3222 authorizing the purchase of portable radios for Motorola Solutions and related maintenance agreements through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with Houston Galveston Area Council. Chief?
Good evening, mayor and council. So, during the budget process, the fire department identified that the current radio system is beyond its end of life and its end of support, which basically means that any radios that we have that break, if Motorola has parts that they can use to fix it, they can. If not, they're useless. So, the need for replacement for both mobile and portable radios was reviewed during preparation of the '26 budget. City administration decided to focus on replacement of portable radios during fiscal year '26. And through that process, we determined that the hardware cost could be covered in the amount of $266,538 under the current tax note, basically the hardware for the '23 portable radios. And then, that includes programming, vehicle and station chargers, accessories and spare That purchase would be through HGAC if approved, and the system is currently in use by city personnel and surrounding member agencies integrating seamlessly to ensure interoperability, maintenance and communication reliability. And so, part of that is what would be covered under the tax note, and part of that is the software piece that was put in for our supplemental that has an ongoing portion. So, staff recommendation is to approve resolution 2025-3222 as presented, and I welcome any questions. And I also have Jonathan Castellaw with Motorola.
Okay, council, does anybody have any questions?
I do. The annual software costs, years one through five, that's a total of $9,200, right? That covers the first five years?
Correct.
And then you have an ongoing, we have two years for $1,500. What are the ongoing costs beyond that?
That is...
Is that the $1,592 beyond the seven years?
That is for the APX Next DMS Essential, which...
That's a good question. The $1,592, the smart, you have two different buckets here. So, you have the smart features, which are specific LTE-based features such as like the mapping, Smart Connect, which is switching the radio over to an LTE-based feature when it's outside the reaches of the radio system. That only goes up to a subscription term of five years. So, the $1,592 that you're referencing to is the DMS Essential, which is specific to, in layman's terms, it's the extended hardware warranty for the actual hardware equipment itself. So, the question is, after that five-year term, do we just renew and keep continuing after that X amount of years? Then the answer is yes. You would just continue to pick up and keep renewing at a subscription-based term, either on an annual basis or specific to a three- or five-year basis. But, simple answer to your question, one's on a five-year term, and the other that you're referencing is a seven-year term specific to the hardware warranty. Does that answer your question?
I believe it does, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
And the, the radios, the, what is the warranty for the radios?
You mean specific to, like, what does it cover? Are you asking if it's a bumper-to-bumper warranty, or are you asking for...
Essentially. And what timeframe?
It would be a seven-year term. It would cover it over that seven-year...
And that's the hardware that you were speaking of?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay. And the, the current radios that we use essentially are outdated at this point.
Correct.
New software, new, new programs and everything. Is there, in the contract, something that allows us to upgrade at such time that this occurs again at a reduced cost, or since we've had a contract, an ongoing cost that's supported without having to go through and purchase brand-new radios yet again? Are these, I guess the best way to ask is, are they upgradable?
Yeah, so, I think what you're asking is terms of, can we, is it almost like a renewal? Can I trade in my X model and go up to another model? Is that essentially what you're...
Essentially, yeah.
Not necessarily in this case, but want to keep in mind, too, that the radios that Motorola makes are in for the long haul. So, in theory, or on paper, Motorola will specify that they'll have, keep any product in market for at least seven years. At that seven-year mark, or generally, generally around that seven-year mark, if Motorola decides to do end-of-life, or says specify a radio is going to be no longer making that radio, we'll specify it to the customers to say, this radio is going to be end-of-life. And at that point, Motorola will specify it for a five-year term. So, if we say it's going to go end-of-life tomorrow, for instance, we'd still have an additional five years from that end-of-life cancellation date to be able to move over X-A into a new model or start looking at something different. Historically, though, looking at the current models that the PD uses and the Apex 6000s and things like that, those have been in the market for well over 12 to 15 years. And most of the times Motorola will extend the life of a radio specifically to keep a specific model in the, in the market for a duration of time. So, I think what you're asking is the protection on investment, is that more or less?
Actually, yeah.
Yes, then there's protection on the investment, for sure.
And we've had the current radio system how long?
Three days, myself and Chief Green.
Yeah. My best guess is around 2014. Or no, not longer than that. I can't answer that.
So, much longer than an anticipated seven, seven or 10-year program?
Right.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Council, does anybody else have any questions? Okay, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve resolution 2025-3222 authorizing the purchase of portable radios from Motorola Solutions, Inc., and related maintenance agreements through the city's cooperative purchasing agreement with the Houston-Galveston Area Council.
Council, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sean. Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair's 6-0. So, now we're going to go back up and take action, if any, on matters discussed in closed sessions in accordance to the following sections of the Texas Government Code, section 551.074. Personnel, do we want to take action on any item in closed session?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we approve resolution number 2025-3223, appointing Paul Liston as presiding municipal court judge for the city of Highland Village and authorizing the city manager to execute the employment agreement.
All right, council, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Motion, Councilman Kixmiller, second. Further discussion?
Mayor, real quick, the contract's actually written for the mayor to sign because it's council appointee. I normally have the mayor sign the council appointee contract, so...
Does it say, you want to change that wording to mayor's?
I would suggest you, yeah, if we can amend the motions real quick.
Amend that and, and read that again.
Mayor, just mayor or mayor and council?
Just mayor.
Just mayor, okay. Okay, I would like to move to approve resolution number 2025-3223, appointing Paul Liston as presiding municipal court judge for the city of Highland Village and authorizing the mayor to execute the employment agreement.
Okay, council, we have a second, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Kixmiller, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Chair's 6-0. Thank you. All right. Moving into late work session, we're going to receive an update on proposed Pilot Knoll Park projects. Pilot Knoll Park projects, that's a lot...
Good evening, mayor and council.
Thank you. Good evening.
In our July meeting, the council directed staff to provide some more information, including a CMAR update for a contract and what that cost looks like, and a 60% review of the project documents. In addition to that, there were some questions that were asked of staff, which I'm going to run through here on the first part of this PowerPoint. And then Heather's going to come in at the end here and provide the financial piece of this project. Here we go. So, water and sewer line, main line work order update. When I left the meeting on July, Sunny, the director of IT, said, hey, Phil, you need some help because you didn't capture all the data. And she kind of, she kind of knew that. She had the history, been here a little bit longer, and we were about two years, two and a half years into our work order system and fully moving forward with it. So, we had some, we needed some help. And also, Public Works helped us with scrubbing the data and identifying things that Public Works may have been called out, out to, to respond first for leaks on water lines and septic systems. So, this is, the next few slides will explain that. So, today, we have a total of 483 labor hours associated with the mainline water repairs. The most recent one was this past weekend that took about 10 hours to repair. And the total labor hours reflect only what has been captured in the work order system. As you can see, 2023 is not in there, so there was no work orders that were, that were captured in terms of repairs. Staff tells me that they did do repairs, but we just didn't capture them on the, on the work order system. Main line, main sewer line repairs, only 34 hours. And again, this is a total labor hours reflect only what has been captured in the work order So, the other thing is to consider, I have two septic options. One of them is, one that was designed by SPI, who Public Works worked with upon my request to help design the system for the cabins. As you remember, in July, that cost was almost $2.2 million. Well, during that time, I happened to find out, if you remember, that there was two additional tanks that were in the woods behind the maintenance area. Talking with a 20-year veteran employee is just looking at the systems that are out there, looking at the maintenance facility, he explained to me that from time to time, there is a swamp back there, septic water. And of course, red flag went up later that afternoon. We removed the fence, cut the trees down, and... down, and found these two tanks back there. They weren't overflowing or anything, but immediately the next day, I called a service company to come in and pump them out. So in that process, the individual who was servicing the tanks said, you know, this system is undersized and it probably needs to be replaced. And I said, well, I need a little something more than, you know, you telling me that. I need an engineer, someone that is in this, in this field to help me understand what is needed. So we contacted, or he handed us information with KCB Engineering, who specializes in this field. He doesn't advertise. Did check out his references with Denton County permitting and also Grayson County permitting. Basically, 10 of the designs that come in, or excuse me, eight out of the 10 designs that come in and across their desk are from KCB Engineering. And I also called his references. He is a specialist in this area. It's different than what Public Works offers, or excuse me, his design. They designed a one complete system. KCB Engineering designs three, or design three separate septic systems. And I'll go into what the differences here in the slides that are coming up. But for this, we're going to focus just on the cabins. The septic system that is for the cabins and is a part of the bond, the other two septic systems are not a part of the bond, okay? So there you have the cabins at 173,550 to put in that system for 16 cabins. But the engineering is for all three systems because at some point, those systems will have to be upgraded. So I figured I'd, you know, just go ahead and pay for the engineering at the cost that it is now versus escalation down the road. And that was my thought process. So KCB, through their assessment, they obtained three quotes. And below are the low and the high. So the RV dump station is, as you can see there, 167,000 on the low end, 219,000 on the high end. The cabin's at 173,550 on the low end. The high end is 260. The gatehouse is 22,000 on the high end. On the low end, 19,700. And you have your totals there. On the low end at 364,000, and on the high end, approximately 500,000 for all, all of those systems, all three of them. So the public works system is one complete system for the entire park, and it would be considered a package plant. This is a design standard that is compliant with the TAC Title 30, Chapter 217, Domestic Wastewater Systems. It isn't engineered, it is engineered to accommodate 24 cabins, and that was a goal, and is expandable beyond 5,000 gallons per day. Now, that's an important number to remember. And it has a life of 100 to 150 years. Has a predicted lower maintenance cost, and Public Works will maintain the system, which is a good thing. The KCB onsite sewage facility, it's an additional septic system, and it's for the cabins only. And the park currently has three septic systems, which are the gatehouse, the RV and dump station, and the existing, or the system that services a day-use restroom. So this will be a fourth one. The design standard, TAC Title 30, Chapter 285, onsite sewage facilities, and it can only be maxed at 16 cabins due to the maximum flow at 5,000 gallons of sewage per day with this type of system. And it has a 40 to 50-plus-year life. It will be maintained by parks via contractors, as we are doing currently now. So that service that we do now for our existing systems, the current costs are maintenance annual costs, that's they come and inspect it and report to the state, things like that, and their TCEQ. They have all the licensing and certification in order to do this. And we get an annual complete pump out at least once a year at $800 for a total annual cost for the existing systems at $1,335. Future costs with the cabins, if we add that additional system, the maintenance cost doesn't change, but the complete pump-out cost will change to $3,900 for a difference of $3,100 annually.
Are those annual costs per system or total?
Total.
Okay.
So the RV dump station's septic system considerations. So replacement is recommended due to the age of the current system and its original design of the 1960s-era camper, camper's wastewater capacity. The existing infrastructure was built to handle much lower daily flow rates than those used generated by today's recreational vehicles. So here's a comparison. If we took an Airstream that was built in 1960s, it was about 20 feet long. They had one tank that combined black and gray water for a total of 15 gallons. Today's Airstream at 20 feet is 28 gallons for gray water and 21 gallons for black water, a total of 49 gallons total. So there's a 226% increase. So in summary, you know, the modern RVs produce three times more wastewater volume compared to the systems of the, that the existing facility was designed for. So it exceeds the demand, right? And I'm going to have a couple of more slides before you ask questions. And I think it's, everything's going to loop around. But I wanted to also put in there a modern RV, what we typically see out there, is a fifth wheel to 36 feet to 40 feet, 44 feet. And if you compare that to the 1960s Airstream, and you go across the line, you see, you know, the total storage, 15 gallons versus 174 gallons. That's over 1,000% increase. Again, it's, it's a lot more than what the existing system is designed for. Now, understand, I didn't know about those two tanks. But once I learned about those two tanks, I put a management process in place to make sure we weren't having a negative environmental impact on federal property. Once I found out about it, what I started doing immediately is doing daily, daily septic recordings. And if the tanks reach 56 inches, we would call to have them pumped out. We have not had to call since the initial pumping in July, when I, when I put this process in place. And this is just a sample of our daily recordings. All of them range, they, all the recordings are around 42 to 41 inches. We haven't had overflowing since we've pumped it. And I would attribute it to the fact that those tanks haven't been serviced in at least 10 to 15 years. So once they got serviced, the system is working, even though it may be overtaxed. It's working.
What does that, what do those tanks support, what area?
The dump station. So all the RVs, the 54, 56 sites that are there, they don't have sewer hookups, so they store it, the gray and the black water. And when they leave, they go to the dump station and dump it. In addition to that, we take also folks that want to use our dump station that are at other campgrounds. It's an open dump station. They pay a fee and they dump there. And then it's also for the campground restroom.
And the leak lines are intact? No issues with leak lines?
Yeah, there's really no way to check that because they're buried. But we know the system is working, and we don't have a negative environmental impact.
Do we have any indication that there could be an environmental impact, or the failure of these tanks due to the age?
There's no indication right now. It's working. I have, I have an individual go out there every day and check those tanks. You can see where there was a problem in previous years. But it's, we're being, it's being managed.
And we're on the, we're on the downside of heavy traffic, though, right?
Yes, we, we went through Fourth of July with this.
With this system?
Yep.
Okay.
Now, you've got a monitoring system on the dump tanks. Could that be extended to these tanks so that you don't have to guy, have a guy go every day?
We could. Yeah, we could, we could add an alarm system to...
Put an alarm out there.
Yep, and a strobe. Yep. We would, you know, hire or get someone to design a system that meets, you know. The other thing is, is because I don't know about these systems, I don't know if you can adapt an alarm system, but I can find all that.
It's just a float alarm.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, thanks.
But I mean, that'd make it simple. I mean, it's, if it gets too high, in what you're doing right now, if it gets too high, you get a pump in there, so.
Yep.
Okay.
And I don't know much about the systems. I'm not a septic guy, so this is probably a very naive question. But are they, are they, could they be retrofitted with a, like the current systems have, where they have the automatic sprinklers to rid of the water?
From what I understand, no, because there's a whole lot of other things that happen into that calculation to make sure that that system...
It's an engineering issue than it is...
Yeah, there's soil, there's percolation, there's, there's so many other factors that I don't have the bandwidth in, that an engineer who specializes in that would understand. And that's based off of the state regulatory and requirements, TCEQ, and the other boards that are involved, for a commercial system.
Okay.
But so summary, right now, it's working?
Yes.
And there's no...
Environmental issue.
Risk of any sort?
Not right now.
Not in need of replacement?
Not today.
Maybe in the future. Okay, so we can take that, just put it on the shelf for a while. Okay.
Don't we have to do regular annual, I know Wesley Freeman up there at Denton County, annually you have to turn in your certification, too, right?
Yeah, the company...
We've failed. We've never failed, right?
No, not that I know of, no. Not, since I've been there, we haven't. But then again, these tanks were just found in July. So we're, we're just starting to give them the information on this. So I don't even think they had them on the books.
I guess, how long has that reporting been going on? And the state has no record of it?
I don't know.
Interesting.
Yeah, we hire, we hire the service company who has all the licensing to put, you know, do all of that work for us.
Do we have no idea when those systems, really, the last time they were ever serviced?
Not those two tanks.
Yeah.
Everything else we do have records of.
Okay.
Okay, so moving on, if you remember in, again, back to the July meeting, this is just a refresher. This is Dunaway slides, and it just, you know, speaks to the timeline. In 2020, 2021, the cabin feasibility study, December 2021, there was a bond issuance. 2022, false opening discussions for professional services. 2023, the grant application. Trails Grant wasn't awarded. The local park grant wasn't awarded. Texas Parks and Wildlife was told that they needed to change how they award grants, so we had to pivot and, and apply again. And so March, Dunaway was hired for professional services. In May, the boat ramp in 2024, for the planning grant, was submitted and awarded. And then in August, we had the local park grant resubmission with a new criteria, and then Phase 1 design of the gatehouse and entry experience was initiated. So in 2024, again, with the timeline ongoing, Phase 1 design, the gatehouse and entry experience, the boat ramp design was awarded and re-scope, re-scoped according to the grant requirement. Schematic design phase for the cabins initiated, cabin styles determined. We brought those to park board and council. October bid Phase 1 of gatehouse entry received one bid and rejected it to the budget. And we had a discussion about that here in council. And then October, we had a boat ramp public meeting. And then destination, marketing and branding presentations, which we presented to council as well. And then 2025, Phase 2, the design of cabins and day-use area. March, boat ramp design submitted to United States Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers. And then ongoing coordination with Public Works on utility project. And then in April, we started looking at a CMAR project delivery because we've, we were finding out, not only from the gatehouse, but other projects that Parks was doing, we weren't getting any bids. So we moved from an RFP to a CMAR delivery method, and we received two qualified bids and recommendation to engage with park contractor and Dean Construction, which we have. And I was instructed in July for Dean Construction to look at the park and all of the projects and provide a budget number. And then August and October, Dunaway and Deconstruction, they all worked, including the city, on the pre-construction pricing exercise. In other words, we were provided information during the process from Dean Construction and Dunaway. And then the, the project program, the entry experience, you know, the guardhouse, and all of the items listed in there, the boat ramp and the enhancements and the items listed there, then ADA accessibility, day-use area, and cabins. And then here's the master plan that you've all seen before, and lays out the program And then this is the project cost estimating in 2021. We did the feasibility study with Dunaway. 2023, the Texas Parks and Wildlife Local Grant, and then the CMAR GMP delivery method in 2025. And then here we have what Dean Construction has put together. The budget total's on the right. The cabin, the gatehouse, the boat ramp, and RV and restrooms is about $4.7 million total. The gatehouse, boat ramp, RV, and day-use area is $1.2 million. And then total cabin and infrastructure cost is $3.4 million. And this does not include a water line, but it does include the KCB-designed septic system. If there's no questions, I'll get Heather to run through the budget numbers with these budget totals. Oh, sorry. Here's the, here's the grant submission. And basically, grant elements on the left side. We did speak to Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, and told them about some of the challenges we were having with construction escalation costs since 2021. They basically said that's happening all over the state, and they want to see these projects built. So they'll work with us any way that they can, including relooking at the grant elements and those that may have been an overmatch that weren't identified as grant elements to possibly provide some funding for those. And this is what the cabins look like for, we went from a stick-built to a prefab. And these prefab modular cabins, this is just one, Energy Star appliances, up to three unique floor plans. And with proper maintenance and care, the cabins can last over 50 years. The gatehouse will also be built out of a modular structure like this.
This is a recommended, recommendation from the CMAR?
Yes, it is. Recommendation...
Costs and...
Yeah, to keep the costs down. Yes, sir.
You know how much that cost savings is?
I can tell you, we went and visited a factory that was building these, not this particular one. But I know, I can't tell you what the exact cost difference is, but I can tell you these run anywhere from 75 to about $95,000 to build.
What do we estimate the other ones to be built at?
I want to say around, in the first estimate, I think I actually have that. If you give me a second. About $175 to $200 a square foot initially, and then you multiply that times 500. I don't have my calculator on me.
Would you say $100 a foot?
$175 to $200.
So you're 200, dear.
200, hold on. 200 times 500.
About $100,000 a unit.
And that was in 2021.
I was thinking it was 100, 120,000.
So you're going to be up to like...
What I remember.
Probably double today's cost. So it's going to be 200 plus.
You're welcome. So some other considerations, some challenges moving forward. Texas Parks and Wildlife grant for the construction of the boat ramp area, although the money is there, the timeline and sequence right now is still unknown. And then the construction costs may change. It's very volatile right now. Even though we're presenting you with numbers today, they may change by the time. There's a guaranteed maximum price if the council chooses to go that way. And then the timeline for the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers' review and approval. I spoke with them a week and a half ago, and they're funded through October. The government shuts down and continues to... If the government shuts down and continues to shut down, we don't know what that looks like for them in terms of being able to work and the backlog that they'll receive. This is, I wouldn't think, be a high priority compared to paying the military and getting boots on it, you know, things like that, that I don't know. And then supply material challenges and tariffs, they are dramatically impacting the market. And construction and grant funding deadline is April 30th, 2028. In other words, I have to apply for reimbursement funding for all the grant elements by April 30th of 2028. And then there's other possible unknowns that have not presented themselves yet. But we feel pretty confident that these are, at least today, the only ones. I'm going to hand it over to Heather now.
All right, thank you, Phil. So with us reviewing the Pilot Knoll project, that this would be a good time to review the 2021 park bonds in our budget, our funding, and how much we've spent and committed so far. So this first column, the original anticipated, that was the budget at the time that the bonds were issued. The revised anticipated from 2024, that was at the time that we were applying for the grants and the budget related to Pilot Knoll and all our different projects going on. Our third column, the updated with CMAR project, our budget, that is our budget, updated with the CMAR budget. And then there's some other differences. Again, you know, for Pilot Knoll, we have most, all this change, these changes are related to the CMAR. We also had a change related to Unity Park, gave you a retainerage baskets. That was a project that went out to bed and it came in higher than what we had budgeted. So we declined that, that bid, and it was determined that it wouldn't be advisable to try to do a portion of it, so we've just kind of pulling that project out of our scope. And then there's also the, the Unity Park Flex Field renovations and Braz's Athletic Fields. They were bed out in conjunction with some other projects, and no one responded to the bid. So Phil has worked with some contractors that we're currently working with to do some in-house renovations, so those budget numbers have changed as well. With all these changes, we did have a contingency line item at the original budget at, when we issued the bonds. And through these changes, our contingency number has been adjusted. So this is where we talk about the funding. We're kind of referencing back to the current updated CMAR budget. The grants, as Phil had spoke, we do have some that are earmarked for this project. We also have, when we were talking in July about the CMAR and their fees, we just earmarked part of the, the interest that's earned on the bonds to use to fund that. And then the remainder is still what is left on, you know, is the bond proceeds, so it's the original $6.4 million that was issued back in 2021. So this is an update of what we have spent or committed so far. Projects that have been completed, I'll highlight those. It's the Hollow Village Tennis Court, the Unity Park Tennis Court resurfacing, and the Unity Park Lided Basketball Courts that will finish, I think Phil had said tomorrow, so it'd be October instead of November. And then the dog park synthetic, synthetic grass, and the Unity Park Basketball Backstop Fence, the Unity Park Field Renovations and Irrigation, and then the Salmaier Tennis Parking and Lions Club Parking Lot Replacement. And then Salmaier Fence, Tennis Fencing with the windscreen replacements, and the Village Park Finish Fishing Park renovation. So this is the same schedule as my first slide, just focusing on the Pilot Knoll projects. On the right side is a little more detail into the cost, you know, coming from those, the pricing list from Dean Construction. The CMAR cabs, cabins only, that should tie into Phil's previous slide. And then we have the Pilot Knoll cabins at $3,300,000. So wanted to do a feasibility analysis, and we looked at the vineyards campgrounds and cabins from the city of Grapevine. They were reporting, we had met, or park staff had met with the faculty or the staff there, and they were reporting, they, they saw 100% occupancy during the summer months and 50% during winter. I reviewed their budget document for 2025, and they reported in their 2024 as an average of 70%. They didn't differentiate between cabins or RVs, so I'm just assuming that that's probably combined accommodation or, sorry, occupancy. And we also looked at Twin Coves Park at the town of Flower Mound, and they had reported for their fiscal year 23, 24, that their cabins occupancy rate was 33.4%, and the RVs campsites were 79.3%. And then I also looked at the National Association of RV Parks and Campgrounds. This is an association that works with private campgrounds, and they have a benchmark report that they put out every two years. The last one I could find was from 2023. And they reported, you know, based upon response from their, their poll, that they had 50% occupancy for modern cabins and cottages, and a 68% occupancy rate for full hookup And then this is our own occupancy rates at Pilot Knoll RV campsites. So you can see, you know, in the last few years, our occupancy rate has been in the high 70s, low 80s. So based upon these occupancy rates, we kind of started with a 65% occupancy, just to come up with, you know, the feasibility and how that would look in our financial statements. And the assumptions, we're, we're looking at 16 cabins at 65%. We were looking at including debt service for the bond, you know, the bond debt service related to construction of the cabins. And then utility issues just for the water. And this is making the assumption that we would bring in the Public Works domestic water and the KCB onsite sewage facilities that Phil had mentioned earlier. And then, you know, for the park bonds, it's, you know, I included the cost of the cabins, engineers, and I subtracted the grant funds, and then allocated that over the 20 years. For utility issue, we used water service that we received, a quote from SPI of 1.1, 1.1 million, with adding mobilization and a 5.5 inflation, because that quote comes from 2023, and then also engineering, so allocating that over 20 years as well. And so this is the Corlees Park budget. So on the actuals, this is the actuals for '23 and '24. And then for our estimates, this is our estimate that we had for 2025 to finish out, and then our budget for 2026. And so, you know, the parks department had presented to the park advisory board a recommendation for increasing the overnight camping and some of the pavilion rentals. So for '26 through '30, these projections include these increases. The rental is, you know, added in, and the revenues and the Pilot Knoll cabin expenses are added into the expenses. And then we're also including the debt service for the water and the KCB onsite sewage facility. Now then, we, we were seeing, you know, for the campsite, or for the cabins, closer to 50%, so we looked at a 50% occupancy. And so with that, you know, we were seeing, you know, a, you know, using the same assumptions, where we're using 16 cabins at a 50% occupancy, and then we're using the Public Works domestic water in the KCB onsite sewage facilities, and incorporating debt service related to the park bond and the water. And then we had in, you know, incorporated in the budget for Corlees Park Fund. I'll let Phil talk on the next set.
Is there any questions?
Oh, yeah, any questions?
Counsel, does anybody have any questions? That's a lot to--
Well, on the fund balance, is that a park fund balance? Like, what, is that the overall?
It's the Corlees Park Fund--
Okay.
--fund balance.
Comments? Kevin's got a question.
Not a, we go back a couple of slides--
Sure.
--real quick for the Twin Coves occupancy for Flower Mound, because I assume that would be the most relatable location in regards to us. They have, I think, pretty nice cabins down there, very nice setup along with that.
Yeah, I can, I can explain what exactly that setup is.
Okay.
They're, they're, they're on wheels, and they're in a flood area. So every time it floods, they have to get city forces, like Street Department, Public Works, Parks, everyone together and move them. So it, and the same thing with Grapevine. So it's a, it's a, it's a, different than what we're proposing.
Is that why their occupancy rates are 33%?
You know, I, when I spoke to them, they did stress that those cabins, because of the moving, moving them so often, they, they have worn out prematurely--
Okay.
--as, as one option, or one of the, one of the challenges. But I can't tell you why, I mean, it's a beautiful park, why if the cabins are put in place, their occupancy rates aren't up. Now, again, we're different in that regard, but we can't guarantee also 50% or 65% occupancy rate. That's not something I can stand up here confidently and say, just because we're different.
Can you look at, though, the, historically, the use pattern for the park at different times, different years, when water levels are higher, and see what the percentage decrease in usage is, and use that, extrapolate that into this scenario?
From Flower Mound?
Or from-- From even our parks.
Our parks, so--
It seems to me that people would probably not go to that park, any park, when the water levels rise as much as they have in many cases.
That great question. Ours will be built outside of the flood area--
That's right.
--so you'll be able to have access to it--
But again, how many people actually will go to the park when water levels are higher, right?
Everything else is underwater. I mean, you can sit in a cabin, but you can't go to the dock, can't put your boat in.
Right.
But Flower Mound's target of 79.3 is right up there with industry standard, and if Grapevine--
But that's RV.
That's, no, no, I know, that's RV, I'm saying, that, that hits that, that number. But if Grapevine and Flower Mound have the same cabin on wheels, Grapevine seems to have, not have a problem, same lake, same lake, same flood, same everything. I think Grapevine is closer to the action of Grapevine, they've got more stuff. But if it's the same cabin on wheels, that's a big delta between Grapevine and Flower Mound on the same lake, which really near each other.
And there's how many cabins in Grapevine? Seven, you said?
Seven.
Seven, there, there was originally 14. They had seven that flooded, and so they just converted those to RV sites.
And Twin Coves has?
19.
19.
Let me go forward a couple of slides. One more. I'm trying to read. So as a council historian, 65% occupancy, I can remember in 2021, we were looking at different occupancies, and we had different cost structures. But even at 65% occupancy, it's $144,000 net benefit to the city. Okay? In 2021, we were looking at a half a million dollars net benefit, so costs have gone up. Some of the costs in here, if we go back to the original, like upgrade of the septic system, is actually less than the original cost structure, okay? Other costs have gone up, okay? But the bottom line is, at 65%, we're less than 20% of what we expected from a revenue, okay? So even if you went to 100%, okay, you don't get close to what the original. So that's the salient point in here, you know, that we, we finally have to come to the, the decision that there's no there, you can't get there.
We're not seeing an increase in that net benefit the longer we wait. But we're at the same place that we were back in July, right? So at this point, it's a service, it's not a revenue generator.
Right, right. It's, it's not moving in the right direction, okay? And so I think where Phil's coming at the end is, you know, recommendations. And I voted for it, Charlotte was here, she voted for it in 2021, as did Robert. We have a different set of situations right now, circumstance, and I don't see a path forward on cabins, okay? And so my recommendation is we go ahead and just shut it down. Any discussion on cabins, it's, there's no, there's no path to get there. You know, and this, this finally puts it out in the CMAR, okay? You know, highlighted and brought in cost data that we looked for, and based on that cost data, you know, if someone else sees it differently, I don't, I don't see it.
I just know we had a $2 million deficit spending this year in our budget. That's all that keeps sitting in my head is 2 million, over $2 million deficit spending on the budget, and so we have to tighten our, however, we, if this, if it was bond money already there, that's-- different, I don't know. But all I can say is, over $2 million deficit spending from a rainy day fund is just a lot of money.
Well, I mean, we still have the bond dollars, we're just not going to spend them here. We don't necessarily have to spend them at all. Okay? But on this project, you know, I think we've gone as far as we can.
We're not doing anything to stop the gatehouse or the boat ramp.
You want to show that? Because I think there's some options, suggested options. I mean, I don't, and obviously, this will be a discussion for counsel, John, you know, what John sees. But I think we all see the exact same thing. And Dorana's point, you know, we, we have to be very mindful. But so, let's see the suggestions.
So we are seeking direction. So here's the first one, a suggestion. Proceed without the cabins, build the gatehouse, renovate the RV restroom, renovate the day use area, and boat ramp improvements. And that was at that 1.4 million dollar price tag. Add more RV slips in lieu of cabins. That can be a future thing. We can take the design that is there and just don't put the cabins in and modify it a little bit, and add premium RV slips. And then reallocation of bond funds. A good example of a reallocation would be towards the Gabian Basket Project at Unity Park that came, that is projected to be way over budget.
Have we done a cost analysis of adding additional RV slips and their production of income?
No, we haven't.
I think on the slide that we had where, was showing the RV slips, they are, they're full. I mean, they're high 70s, low 80s. So down the road, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, they're extremely, extremely popular. Right.
Oh, yes. But I think that's something down the road that we could look at. I don't think that that's a decision that needs to be made.
Right.
Right now. I think that...
No, I agree. I don't, I don't think we need to make a decision on that. But it would be nice to see in some, at some future time.
Right.
The benefit of putting those in.
Right.
Rather than the cabins.
Well, and based on this slide, obviously, that's, they're popular.
You know, you said in, this is a, this is roughly a 10-year analysis, and we've maintained on average 69 to, let's say 75% roughly, right? When was the last time we had a high water level? Was it in this timeframe or was it before 16?
Oh, yes.
Well, I thought so, too.
Yeah, it's, it's at least that I can remember since I've been here. I got here in 2017 at least three times.
That's what I thought.
Where we had to shut RV slips down in that part.
On average, it really doesn't affect us that much.
No.
In specific timeframes, it would, definitely.
Right.
Average, it's maintained.
It's, it holds steady.
Yeah.
Yeah, the big spring flooding we had was 2023, wasn't it?
That sounds right.
And that was at 79%.
Yep.
Yeah.
And we, we, there's a tremendous effort to keep that open because it does generate revenue, not only there, but also brings tax dollars into the, into the city.
How many of the RV slips we have now end up underwater in a high water event?
I, I have to get you that number, but I believe it's about eight to 10.
And the one?
And it depends on the water level.
And where these would be placed, should we do that in the future, they're above the water level.
Say that again?
They're above the high water level. If we put them in the...
Where the cabins are.
Suggesting cabins, right?
Yeah, you, yeah. It's not, it's a non-issue.
Okay. You know, effectively, what it's telling me, though, is we can, we can pretty much rely on a 75 to 80% use factor across the board.
That area, I can't remember if I took counsel out on a tour of that site. I know you've been there, John. We've walked it. But it's, the look and feel is different than the current RV park. You're, you're in the woods.
Mm-hmm. More rustic, yeah.
Yeah, more rustic. I think these are going to be in the high 80 as far as occupancy rates, just based off of the current activity and the demand that is out there.
I, I, I too believe that the return for the cabins is not anywhere near what we were really hoping for. And given our current situation, I think it's best that we, we bypass the cabins at this point as well.
Okay, so we've landed on no cabins. Is there, oops, sorry, I went too far. Is there any other direction? Are we okay with, with us moving forward with building the gatehouse, renovating the RV restroom, renovating the day use area and the boat ramp improvements?
Well, I personally think absolutely. I've visited that gatehouse and that's just a shame.
Just keep it, keep it in, keep it under budget.
Well, but as, as well-visited as this park is with the RVs, I mean, they need to, that needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then look at, for future, adding RV slips for, in the future.
Yep. Okay.
How much of the bond funds would you need for reallocation for the Gabians?
Gabian, wrong. It was 1.1, 1.2, so it's at, I can back up.
An 80, so you...
Well, it's, it's less than 680.
I mean, that's the current number.
I think it's 620 that's remaining. So it's the difference, if, give me a second, I'll get to it. And then we can land on a accurate number.
Was it 620? Is that what I saw?
Unity Park Gabian Baskets, oh, that's not it. This isn't the slide.
It's one more forward, I believe.
I think so. I think we passed it.
Oh, we passed it?
I believe.
Maybe you can drive. I'm messing around on your spreadsheets.
I can't tell, I was trying to do them out, but I can't figure out.
There it is.
So it was 685.
Is remaining? That's, no, that's what you had budgeted.
Yeah, so 640 is left.
I would just make a recommendation that before we look, look deeply into that, I mean, we had cost numbers, but it's like we did when we were looking at completely redoing the ponds. Remember that? I mean, we were going to re-sculpture it and put walking trails. I mean, it was a big, big number. If we revisit that and see what we're getting for potentially 1.2 million foot baskets in.
And bring it back.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a big number. Okay? You know, and what's, what do we get in return for it?
Yeah, just to let you know, Scott's helped out on a lot of these projects from parking lots. And this is one that he helps us out with the Gabian Basket. So he's a big help in this. So he'll probably more than likely be the one presenting.
Well, I mean, it's just one of those things that, you know, you look at it and say, do we still have to do it? Okay? At all? You know, what's the downside if you don't do it? We dredged it, okay, which was a lot less money than what we were going to do for completely remodeling it. Okay? So all I'm asking is, before we think about taking that money and putting it over there, let's see what the, what the net benefit and bring it back to council. Because now it's a 1.2 million dollar project.
Okay.
Not a $700,000 project.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so...
Keep that money invested.
Did you get all the directions that you needed?
Yes, and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Phil, for being so actively engaged in this and, you know, for the CMAR. Some of us are a visual learner and needed to see this. But I do kind of agree with, I absolutely agree with the rest of council that there's just no going forward with, with the cabins. This can't happen. Does anybody else have anything? I feel like Debbie Downer here, you know? It's the reality of it.
Reality, that's right.
Better to be a downer now than after we've started turning dirt and...
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I know there was a lot of time and energy put into that and I appreciate it. I really do. So, all right, counsel. I guess that's all the direction we needed on that. Status reports on current projects and discussion of future agenda items. Does anybody have anything? No? Okay, well, for everybody out there, be safe. Happy Halloween. It's on Friday. Trick or treat safely. And, and counsel, y'all trick or treat safely and we'll see you in November. All right.
One thing I forgot during my, my report, the city and the Friends of the Highland Village Parks Foundation are partnering together for an Arbor Day and tree planting event, and that's going to be November 8 at 9:00 AM. Attendees will learn about the Friends of the Highland Village Parks Foundation and their reforestation project. Volunteers are encouraged to assist in planting 20 native trees along the path between the pickleball courts and the baseball fields at Unity Park. And you can look for a blue tent. And if you want to volunteer, you can go to F O H V P F at gmail dot com. And the parks crew's going to do the hard work and dig the holes, and then they'll have shovels out there for the participants to plant the trees.
Okay. All right, counsel, does anybody else have anything?
Just to follow up to what you just said, is there an opportunity that we could put signage along the trail system for those that are actively engaged in our parks and trails, encouraging them to join in the effort?
For this?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could talk to Phil and Laurie, see what we could do to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, be a good idea.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Go.
All right. We are adjourned at 8:50.